All right, I will call this meeting back to order. Item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
My understanding, there was no announcement out of closed session, Madam President.
Thank you. Item 6.0, Agenda Adoption.
I'll move.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in papers, say aye.
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 Item 7.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. 7.1, Resolution Number 3180, Recognition of the District's Structural Deficit. It has my name on it, but I will be referring this to Member Wu.
Thank you.
And this is a conference and first reading, just so everyone's clear.
This is a very important resolution. It articulates why we are in a deficit. And we mean what we say. You know, for, for example, 2% is state mandated. 2% is a state mandated minimum, which means that we must maintain that minimum. To assure that we don't dip below that minimum, we should be at no less than 5%. State average reserves is 14% to 15%. We were, we are at that now, but we know that we are going to dip below it. 93 million is what it says, but it is a, is a tenuous number for us. We have to stay above it. And that is how we gain our fiscal credibility. That's, that's all I have to say. I'll say more later on.
All right, do we have any public comment on item 7.1?
There is public comment, I believe, under 7.1.
My understanding is we have one public comment?
Yes, there is. One live public comment. Let me see if they are here. Daniel Darby, are you there? Okay, it looks like he is, but, yes, can you hear me, Daniel Darby?
It looks like he's on mute, Ann.
We're trying to see if we can unmute it from this side.
Hello?
Yes. Hello? Mr. Darby, go right ahead.
Okay, and this is speaking to the resolution, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Board. I saw the resolution yesterday evening, and I can't help but say that this is not serving our community whatsoever, this resolution. Based off of my reading of one of the reports that was cited in the document, we seem to be cherry picking items and then trying to create a narrative that the only way that I could phrase it is that it's a false narrative. I am not saying that there is not a budget problem in the district. I'm just saying that the narrative that is trying to be presented in this resolution is not accurate. Data has been cherry picked to, for this resolution. It is no different than me sitting here telling you that 100% of Sacramento's students in high school have been accepted to a four-year program. Now, that statement is true based off of the population that I sampled. And this is the kind of information that has been cherry picked from the report that you are going to be voting on tonight. It does not help any of the parties involved in coming to any type of agreements either. We are just seem to be trying to sow more discord in their community. Now, I understand that we are just coming out of four years where falsehoods and deceits have been put out by the highest levels of the government. I was hoping that this country has actually gone past that, but right now, we still seem to be in the thick of it with this resolution that you guys are going to be voting on. So I would like to implore you that unless you actually look at those numbers, the numbers that are being presented in this resolution are not being framed in the right context.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Thank you.
District of solutions, not resolutions. Solutions, not resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. All right, do we have additional comments, Ann?
We do, President Pritchett. We have three written comments. And the first is from Steve and Pam Johns. And it is a comment that is for both items 7.1 and 7.2. So I'm going to go ahead and read now. And it says, "President Ryan and Board Members, we are parents to a third-grade student at Caleb Greenwood-Ivy World School. We continue to be significantly concerned with the district's grave financial condition. While we are not able to access the substantive materials for Board Agenda Items 7.1 or 7.2, we agree that the district has a structural budget deficit that must be addressed with the Board and its labor partners at the table to resolve. Any recovery plan cannot rely on program cuts alone and should evaluate any potential cuts to ensure that they do not result in the loss of revenue. On the first point, the district's financial condition must be addressed. Going into receivership is not a viable option. Oakland Unified School District went into receivership in 2003 and was required to accept $100 million loan from the state. The burden of carrying the loan and paying interest has not benefited Oakland Unified. It has had average annual budget deficits between $20 and $30 million. One in five Oakland public schools scores in the bottom 5% statewide in math and English language arts proficiency. And as of 2018, the district still had $20 million left in the loan to repay. See 2017 to 2018 Alameda County Grand Jury Final Report, quote, 'Oakland Unified School District: Hard Choices Needed to Prevent Insolvency.' Sacramento City Unified School District needs to resolve the financial condition to avoid this from happening here. On the second point, Caleb Greenwood is an international baccalaureate world school offering that primary years program. The successful program was established several years ago through a collaborative of the school, its families, and the community in response to Caleb's decreasing enrollment due to students attending school elsewhere. I was engaged with many of the community members and parents during these discussions, and they were eager to establish a program that would provide their families with an alternative to private school. The Ivy program has been enormously successful and is recognized throughout the region. With the program in place, Caleb Greenwood's enrollment has increased from 401 students in 2013-14 to 559 students in 2019-20. This 39% increase is significant. Not only does the annual revenue from increased enrollment cover the costs associated with Ivy program, but it also provides additional revenue to the district. Decimating programs such as the Ivy World School program at Caleb won't resolve the structural bus budget deficit. It will, in fact, cost the district additional revenue. The proposed fiscal recovery plan considered last December would have eliminated the Ivy coordinator position Caleb Greenwood, which would prevent the school from being reauthorized as an Ivy World school. This will likely affect Caleb's and the district's future success. The district has a structural budget deficit that must be addressed. Any recovery plan cannot rely on program cuts alone and should evaluate potential cuts to ensure that they do not actually result in the loss of revenue." And the next comment is from David Fisher, and the time is combined with Nikki Malewski and Cindy Stewart. And so it says, "Good evening, I'm David Fisher, President of Sacramento Teachers Association." Here we go again. At the last school board meeting, we suggested that the election of three new school board members, along with very encouraging budget news from the state of California, was an opportunity for SCUSD to turn the page on its unprecedented attack, attack on its certificated and classified staff, and an opportunity for a constructive discussion to improve services to students. Instead, the district staff, under the leadership of Superintendent Aguilar, continues down the path of divisiveness and misinformation. Since Mr. Aguilar became the SCUSD Superintendent, the district's budget has been rejected by the Sacramento County Office of Education for the first time in the history of the Sacramento City Unified School District, and five additional times since then. At the same time, SCUSD currently has the largest reserve fund in its history, $93 million. Since the district's budget was rejected for the first time in August 2018, Superintendent and Superintendent Aguilar, with the support of the school board, stated to the public that the district was months away from fiscal insolvency and state takeover. The district has operated at a significant surplus. In 2018-19, the district's original budget projected unrestricted general fund deficit spending of $26,937,063, only to end the year with an $857,200 surplus. In 2019-20, the district's original budget projected unrestricted general fund deficit spending of $12,344,417, only to end the year with a $23,565,268 surplus. In addition to the $93 million reserve fund, the SCUSD 2020-21 original budget included an additional $101.3 million in its books and supplies line item, a placeholder that the SCUSD Chief Business Officer, Rose Ramos, explained as this way, quote, "The books and supplies categories used to balance restricted budgets when funding is known, but exact expenditure plans are not. Once decisions are made as to the type of expenditures, the budget will be moved to the appropriate line item." In 2019-20, the district spent $11.1 million on books and supplies. The districts, the district has purposefully misrepresented the findings of various third parties, including State Auditor Elaine Howell. In her report issued in December 2019, the State Auditor stated explicitly, quote, "We did not validate the district's budget data," unquote, page 63, quote, "In its attempt to summarize the findings of our audit, Sacramento Unified selectively presents our key findings," page 63, unquote. Repeatedly, the State Auditor calls our district, quote, "disingenuous, misleading," and even concludes that the district, unquote after misleading, and even concludes that the district acted, quote, "in violation of state law," pages 27 and 65 to 66. Also notably, the auditor stated on page 63, quote, "We identified significant variances between the district's budget and actual expenditures," unquote. A pattern we have pointed out for years and a practice the district continues to this day. FICMAT CEO Mike Fine has stated explicitly that the district lacked fiscal credibility and that he has, quote, "no competence," unquote, in the SCUSD leadership. The district commissioned a report from the Policy Analysis of California Education, PACE, in 2019, an entity where Superintendent Aguilar serves on the advisory board. The report was immediately denounced by Princess Moss, the Secretary Treasurer of the National Education Association, quote, "Across the country, we've seen these same tactics used twisting data to justify a political agenda. I was at the bargaining table in Sacramento, so I have seen firsthand how this administration has mismanaged fiscal priorities, putting raises for administrators over the needs of students and communities. As educators, our core truth is first and foremost seeing to the needs of our students. This report serves the political will of its patrons in the district rather than the interests of Sacramento students," unquote. Toby Boyd, the President of the California Teachers Association, was even more direct, quote, "The students of SCUSD deserve a quality public education and have been waiting far too long for school district officials to put their needs first. By failing to report the gross fiscal management, fiscal mismanagement by district officials, the PACE/pivot program, pivot report perpetuates the failure to serve Sacramento students and communities as they should be and as our students deserve. The objectivity and research methods led to skewed findings that clearly only serve one person, SCUSD Superintendent Jorge Aguilar," unquote. CTA President Boyd's comments were prescient. In March 2019, SCUSD promised the community and the school board passed a resolution reiterating the promise that the superintendent would not take a pay increase until the school board passed a budget that had either a positive or qualified certification. As confirmed by Superintendent Aguilar in his sworn testimony before Perv on December 15, 2020, while no such budget has been approved, Superintendent Aguilar still accepted a pay increase, resulting in a $34,000 increase in his total annual compensation. The transcript of the Superintendent Aguilar's testimony can be found here, in particular, page 69 to 70. This increase alone is more than the total annual salary of the majority of the classified staff. A little over two weeks ago, Governor Newsom unveiled his proposed state budget for 2021-22 that included the largest amount of spending for K-12 education in California history. Using the numbers in the SCUSD first interim budget as a baseline, Governor Newsom's budget will generate more than $100 million new dollars to the district in the next three years, together with the SCUSD's revised calculations regarding the unduplicated student numbers. The district's second interim budget should be, quote, "positively," unquote, certified. As of the most recent figures provided by the district, SCUSD currently has more than 111 certificated vacancies. The nation faces a critical teaching shortage that will make recruitment and retention even harder in the coming months. With this vastly improved budget news, how does SacCity propose to address the teaching shortage? By cutting the take-home pay of every certificated educator by 2% to 34.6% through massive health insurance takeaways. That's right, SacCity's solution to a massive recruitment and retention crisis among certificated educators is to slash their take-home pay and cost shifting $20 million from teachers and into the district's overflowing reserve fund. Ironically, projections regarding the state budget in 2022-23 anticipate that California will meet the threshold that will place a cap on what a school district may hold in its reserve at 10%. SacCity's reserve fund is currently over 17%. Continuing to stick millions of dollars into the district's reserve fund does nothing to address the suspension rates of African-American students or improve services to students with special needs. Neither does raising the pay for the superintendent while demanding mass cuts in take-home pay to certificated and classified staff. It's time to stop playing games with the budget projections and get down to the hard work of educating our students by ensuring that every student in the Sacramento City Unified School District has a fully certificated teacher in the classroom who reflects the diversity of our district, and that staff have the resources to create the best learning environment possible." And the next comment is from G.A. Tubo, and says, "Regarding this item, I share the frustrations of many at how the district was managed by previous boards and staff appointed by boards to allow a deficit structure to accumulate over many years, but the students today and tomorrow should not be penalized for the failures of adults. It's easy to point fingers at elected and appointed leaders, but all stakeholders, including myself, share in the ownership of this problem because blitheness to the warnings of a yellow status from SCOE for years are not an excuse for our collective failures, failure to take action to address the deficit structure before it impacted cash flow projections and brought the specter of potential loss of local control, the fiscal crisis. That the resolution of the fiscal crisis has been delayed several times does not mean that the crisis has been resolved. I welcome the votes of trustees to approve this resolution and in doing so acknowledge that the fiscal crisis is real and that it is the responsibility of the Board to address it through measures that protect the needs of the students for whom the district exists to serve. Failing to approve the resolution won't change the facts, but will indicate a lack of focus on the needs of students." And this is from Allison French-Tuboe. And, and that was the final public comment on the side.
All right, we will go move to Board Member Discussions. Anyone like to start? All right. Member Murawski?
Thank you. Thank you, President Pritchett and Member Wu, Vice President Wu, for bringing this forward. So I really appreciated the prior, the last comment, and I have been thinking of, right along those same lines, that, you know, as responsible board members and stakeholders should really be pushing the district to make decisions that maintain our long-term fiscal health. And it is a responsibility of all of us. It is all of us, schools, parents, students, teachers, staff, board members, superintendent. We're all in the same boat. You can't, you know, poke a hole in someone else's side of the boat, you're going down too. So we all need to be on the same page and accept reality of budget projections, the complexity of different revenues and budgeting methodologies that are reflected when we talk about the budget uncertainty and these revenues uncertainty and our expenditures, which we saw in dramatic fashion this past year as schools have been closed. So the budgets are complex, they're always changing, the projections will never equal actuals. No one is saying the district staff is infallible. You know, we, we have the responsibility as board members to ask good questions, to ensure our budget is transparent, as accountable as possible. But we also need to rely on staff, as staff relies on best practices, as documented in this resolution. It's important to note that over the last two years, since I've been on the Board of what I've seen, staff has done tremendous work in earnestly addressing recommendations from outside entities like FICMAT and trying to improve and succeeding in improving the budgeting methodologies in alignment with best practices. So we just need to, you know, keep acknowledging this. I appreciate this resolution. It's easy to misrepresent budgets, but that is not what is happening at the district. We are trying to grapple with reality. The deficit numbers are not making judgments or ad hominem attacks. The numbers are not divisive. They just need to be added up to keep us whole at the end of the day. So, but yeah, also, you know, these last four years, I agree, have taught us that we need a shared basis of truth to move forward with. And so if anyone, this is again a first reading, I think if anyone has additional perspective they think should be included here, or if they take issue with any of the particulars of the resolution, they should communicate that. And we can further discuss when the resolution is brought back, but largely supportive. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Member Murawski, and I definitely echo your comments. And I just want to say that, you know, some, the comments, this is definitely not an attack. If it's an attack on anyone, this is an attack on our students. Our budget is an attack on our students. And that's what this breaks down to, right? And, you know, in, you know, one-time funds should not and will not, will ever be used for ongoing funds. And we, we as board members, we have a duty to be the good stewards of our district. So I think that this resolution is a good start to stand together. It should be our collective voice to stand together and, and move forward. So any other board member comments? Member Garcia and then Member Phillips.
Thank you, Board President. I was just, you know, absorbing the public comments and sort of, you know, after having read this resolution last night, you know, just really reflecting that this resolution does not paint a pretty picture. And unfortunately, this is our story, right? It's a reflection of where our district is. And, and it also provides a sort of background on how we got here, but also how we can move forward. So therein lies the opportunity, and as Board Member Murawski mentioned, I mean, we're in this together. This is, this is our entire community in our, in our schools, you know, from students, parents, staff, teachers, our principals, our, you know, staff at the district office. We are on the same boat, so moving together is of, of importance. So I did want to ask a question because I, I don't know how this might fit in, maybe after the next, after we discuss the next item, how we may include in the resolution, you know, priorities moving forward? How do we prioritize, you know, how we're going to approach making reductions? So I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, I'm not sure with where this might fit in, if it fits into the resolution or whatnot. So, so I leave that open and in how, how we might want to think about bringing it and being explicit on how we're going to prioritize moving forward, so.
I thank you for that, Member Garcia. And yes, definitely, maybe after the next presentation, we can work on that, and when we bring it back at our next board meeting, we can review it. Member Phillips?
Thank you. I was just looking through this myself, trying to figure out if this isn't an attack, that it speaks loudly to what the actual problem is. I am a little, I mean, I'm a, we know that there's a problem, we know that it's a big problem, but it does seem to me that there's a lot of solution that doesn't stick with why a lot of our parents and teachers and staff are all writing in wanting to save their schools. It's more of finding the right words for it. It's, it's, it's more of a plan to go at, go at teacher pay, go at classified staff pay. We do realize that it, obviously, benefits are very costly, and as a result of them being very costly, it, it does look like we have to resolve in some kind of way to have, to have things work out in a way that's going to be best for our student body. I am just concerned about kind of the language in it. It just, it points out a lot of, it encourages the finger pointing. And if we're all in the same boat, I also want to make sure that it's not just the Board and the district, that it's also, you know, our, our teachers and our unions, that we're all part of this. I mean, everyone recognizes there's a structural deficit. At some point, we all hit a fork in the road, and we went one way, and then some went the other way, and we have yet to come together on that. And that's where we need to put our heads together and figure out exactly what's going on, I mean, before we start making, you know, exorbitant cuts that are going to hurt our students. But I do believe that it's, it's, it's missing something. Maybe it's just missing some humility. I know it's a, it's a very firm statement. It says exactly what it needs to say. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're aware that this is a big boat, and there are a lot of us that are going to go down with it if we don't do something in the near future. I just want to make sure that we recognize who's in the boat. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Phillips. And yes, I am willing to have a conversation with you as well. And I, I guess when I read the resolution, it states a lot of facts, and the facts aren't pretty.
No.
And there's not much we can do to fluff up those facts, to be honest. Member Vila and then student member Sheik.
I will say, this is all very frustrating to have to constantly go through. I mean, we've been going through this for years, and we're still here. Again, as you had mentioned, President Pritchett, this is not pretty. This isn't a finger pointing. This isn't a negative narrative that we are making up to create any more divide than we already feel. I have said this multiple times, that this is the opportunity for us all to work together. It's really the time that we reach out to one another and say, what can we do to provide solutions? And again, I will, you know, staff has done a tremendous job, and it's, can, I can't imagine being in their shoes and presenting this information to our community. and presenting this information to our community, to us, and giving us such a horrible outlook of what our situation really is. And the bottom line is, this goes against all of the core values that we stand for as a board, and we stand for in, for the student district, for the Sacramento City School District. It's imperative that we are always putting our kids first. And when these, in, when these cuts will come down, which I don't want them to, these are going to impact our children, and it's going to impact programs that we need. So I really want to move forward, again, as Lisa had mentioned, or Member Ruski, there are holes in the boat, we are all responsible for this, but if this is a time to put out the olive branch and say, how can we work together? We're not hiding money, there, I don't think that Ms. Ramos is not, she's very qualified to do this job, and I understand that that's a very hard task, but we rely on her, and I support the work that she's doing, and we need to stand behind our staff, and we need to work together as a board, and with the different teachers, our community members, our parents, to do the right thing.
Right. Member Vila, Student Member Sheik?
Thank you, President Pritchett. I would just piggyback off of what Member Villa shared, I agree wholeheartedly. You know, one of our public commentators shared a, you know, an important statement saying, no, resolutions are more solutions, or something along the lines of that. And I agree, we do need more solutions, more than we need resolutions, but I think to move forward, we do need a recognition that for some reason, we haven't come to agreement over, that after audit, after audit, after audit, we are seeing that there's a structural deficit. Ms. Ramos has presented this to this, presented this to us countless times in the clearest of terms, with the clearest of numbers, what's going on, and yet, we pretend as if that's not happening. And so we can have a conversation later tonight about what specific cuts we might have to take. But I think it's important to note, first of all, that nobody wants to cut teacher pay, nobody wants teachers to suffer, we love our teachers. We love those specialty programs, that's why I was so strongly against the fiscal recovery plan in its first iteration. But to pretend as if, recognizing the problem that's real is somehow an attack, I think that's incredibly tone deaf in a district that wants to avoid street receivership. Because God knows that if you think this is bad, state receivership is not going to look pretty. Thank you.
Well said, Student Member Sheik. Are there any other board comments or discussion? Member Rhodes?
I'll make mine as brief as possible. Just, just for clarification for community, could you re-explain the difference between a deficit, having a current deficit, and a structural deficit very quickly? Anybody, Superintendent, you can take a stab, or anybody, could you guys re-explain just for that?
Superintendent or Ms. Ramos?
Yeah, Member Rhodes, I'm going to defer to, to Ms. Ramos only because it actually is part of our presentation, and so she has that queued up, because we do think it's important to reiterate and calibrate terminology as we move forward, but I'll just ask her to do it now.
Sounds good.
Yep, I can do that, definitely. So, and the question was the difference between a structural deficit and a deficit? Member Rhodes, I want to make sure I heard you correctly.
Correct.
Okay, so a deficit occurs, let's take an example of, I'm going to try to put it as simple as possible for everyone in the public, let's just take a household budget. But, you know, you have your income that comes in, and you have your bills, and you know pretty much what they are, and it's, you know, your regular paychecks and your regular bills. Let's, and then you balance, you sometimes have money left over at the end of the month, great. Let's say the next month, and let's take an example where you have, you know, limited savings. Let's say the next month, your car breaks down, and your expenses for that car are super expensive, and it depletes your savings, plus, you know, you don't have enough from your income to pay for that whole car expense, so you have to not pay something to pay for that car expense. So now you have, that month, you have a deficit, right? Because your expenses exceeded how much revenue you came in. Let's say, let's keep it simple, you have a thousand dollars in income that comes in with this car expense, now your expenses for the month are one thousand two hundred dollars. So you have, you're short two hundred dollars, right? For that month, you have a deficit. So either you're going to have to either, you know, forego something to pay for that two hundred, or hopefully you have enough in your savings to offset that. So that, that would be like a short-term deficit, you know, you weren't expecting that, you know, I don't know, you didn't know the transmission was going to blow out, whatever, something. So let's take another example of a structural deficit. That's more persistent, that's more ongoing. Let's say that your income drops, that there is a loss of, of an income in the household, for whatever reason. And so now that thousand dollars of revenue of income that you had coming in drops to five hundred, but your expenses are still going to be the one thousand dollars. Until you replace that income, or you're able to reduce those expenses to match that lower income, you're going to have an ongoing persistent structural deficit in that household. So this is where the district is at right now. The district, the deficit is not because we have these one-time expenses that are eating up all of our reserves, it's that our ongoing expenses for the last several years have exceeded our ongoing revenue. We have been getting by because we have had savings that we call reserves, and I know our reserves are pretty high, but they're high for a reason, because we know that we just do not have enough revenue to support our expenses on a long-term basis. And at some point, unless we reduce those expenses to match our revenue, or we get additional revenue to match our expenses, we're going to get to a point where we deplete those savings slash reserves. And so that's, I hope, you know, that clarified that.
Yeah, so just, just for as nameless terms as possible, our deficit is not having money now, a structural deficit, meaning that you're spending is, you're spending currently more than the revenue that's going to be coming in. So thank you for that, I think it's very important as we go forward, and communities watching, that they, they get a, a good grasp of what those terminologies are. And currently, I'll pitch it back to Rose, currently, we're not in a deficit, we're in a structural deficit, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that. Then my, my next question, Resolution number thirty-one eighty. As it stated in the document, and it's widely reported that we have a structural deficit, which Rose just explained. And, and also, majority, I think, our board, teachers, unions, labor partners, community, and outside agencies that have done a report, also agree that we have a structural deficit. And, but I think the biggest thing is like, how we go about taking down that structural deficit. But no one can say that, you know, we don't have a structural deficit overall. But could you please explain what the purpose of us having a resolution to recognize the district has a structural deficit when it's already well-stated and known and reported on? Could you explain that to the, the public at large, and why would our board be wanting to move in this direction? And I think that, that's also a good explanation for our community, because, you know, on a community note, we want, we don't want to do things that are ceremonial, and we want to do things currently that best impacts the people we are, we want to service, right? And so, or the people that we are stewards towards, and we want to make sure that they understand, if this is already known to be, and already agreed upon, and already reported upon, why is it necessary for us to have a resolution to recognize what is already recognized? Thank you.
Member Rhodes, I'm going to answer that question, and then I'll allow board members, President Pritchett, anybody else to respond. I would say that broadly speaking, I think it's important that we all start from a baseline understanding of what the facts are related to our budget deficit, to the structural deficit and the challenges that we face, because today, as you will also next week, you will be presented with information of, of a very important set of decision points that we are bringing to the board about why it is that you will have to consider, we will have to consider potential cuts to programs that achieve ongoing savings for us to narrow or close that structural deficit. And I believe that there does not exist a baseline understanding and acceptance, recognition of those facts. We have presented all of that information, which is a summary of what you just mentioned, a reflection of what independent entities have said. But I would also point to the public comments that we just heard as a reason why I think it's important that, that we as a district establish that our understanding of what our challenges are, are stated largely in that resolution.
Is anybody else hopping in before I ask my last one?
Member Murawski? And then Member Villa?
Yeah, thank you. I would just add, I, I think it's important to, to communicate to our community, if we're taking significant decisions that, that affect programs and services for kids, that, like, on what basis we are making that decision? So I think, you know, even though a resolution is, is a resolution, it's, you know, it's, it's important to establish, you know, what that basis was, right, for, for really impactful decisions.
Member Villa?
I'll follow up with what Board Member Murawski had stated. It's important that we're all on the same page and having the same vote and voice, that we are presenting facts, and that our community is understanding of why, why we're getting to this point, where that information is coming from, and how we can move forward with those set of facts. So I think it's really important that this resolution moves forward, so we can take action and do the work that needs to be done together.
Thank you guys for saying why this is important. I think that when we, we also have to center a lot of our conversations centered on community. And, and as we move forward, we have to make sure that we're able to involve a community along with stakeholders and partners. Now, when like the resolution, I would suggest also that, that it states somewhere in there specifically, or some points, I don't remember which board member brought it up, but that it states how we will work with our partners, right? How we will engage community around this new resolution. We've, we've made resolutions in the past, and resolutions become resolutions that, you know, obviously, we can decide to uphold, or we can not decide to uphold. But with these resolutions that we push forward, if we do decide to move forward with these resolutions, it has to be based in, in moving forward in tangible action steps. Once again, things during these times can no longer be ceremonial to say that we, we stand for this. Well, if we stand for this, then what are we doing, right? That, that's my question, and that's my push to my colleagues on the board. If we're going to have a resolution, then let it stand for something, and let us have action behind what we're standing for. Let us put forward things that are tangible outcomes that we want to see, and move forward to those tangible outcomes, and hold ourselves responsible and liable to get these things done as our community expects us to, and will hold us accountable for. We were all voted in by our constituents, we all owe a debt of service to our constituency and the district as a whole, and I want you guys to remember that as we move forward, with any resolution that comes forward, that, that has to be action-based to better service who we want to serve and why we're here. So thank you guys for your time, I just wanted to make sure that we are sending the conversation. I look forward to more conversation in the future at our, at February fourth.
Thank you, Member Rhodes, and I completely agree with you, and, you know, as, you know, just to kind of reiterate, this is our opportunity to be that collective voice, and I want to point out that often with resolutions, we come up with, we have a resolution on the agenda, and we vote on it that very night. We have, this needs to be an impact, this needs to be our next step of moving forward, of working with all parties and, that are involved. Not just the board, not just the district staff, but all parties that are involved. So that's why we are giving the board an opportunity to, to give us our feedback, and while we're bringing it back at the next meeting.
And can we have, can we also have analysis, staff report analysis of how this impacts? I think that, I come from a place that where we usually have staff reports connected to anything that, that comes from, that comes to us. And I think that a, a good analysis of, of how this, this resolution impacts our, our betters would be really great to have. And so I think that in the future, we will, we will, I would love to see staff reports connected to this, this type of resolution, but we can also talk more about that in depth of what that looks like, and how that impacts our staff in general, and how that can be allocated. Thank you guys for your time, and look forward to the rest of our discussion today.
Member Rhodes, I guess I'm confused on what the analysis is that you're asking for.
Okay, yeah, so usually with a staff report, I, I come from, the governance body came from for a commission, Parks and Rec Commission. Anytime that we had a resolution, or action, or an item, we had a staff report to, that also let us know the impacts of this item. And then we also, we had the staff reports in other, with our, with our budgeting or our cuts, there's a staff report that let us know, at this school site, this is the impact for cuts, or this is what it will impact positively, and this will impact negatively. I think with a resolution, something like that would be advantageous to have. And also, if that staff report was attached so that the public could also see the, the impacts of a type of resolution like this, and then what are the goals? I think that as we strive towards transparency, and we strive for community engagement, a stronger community engagement, that type of analysis will better our board, but then also better the way that people are able to engage. So that's, that's what I was talking about.
Okay, maybe I can ask Superintendent how staff reach out to Member Rhodes to clarify exactly. I know within this resolution, there are several links that link to audit reports and recommendations. And it's kind of clear, like, what the impact is to me, but, but I want to make sure that we get you the information that you need, Member Rhodes, so I'll ask the Superintendent to.
Yeah, President Pritchett, I can just interject very quickly. Perhaps we revisit that comment after the next presentation to see if there might be some connections that Member Rhodes might be able to give us a little bit more guidance, and we'd be happy to put anything in writing, but I, I, I just am thinking that it might be appropriate for us to come back to see if, if there's any analysis from the presentation that might tie back to the resolution.
Okay.
And it might be, it might be something that this body is not used to doing, but it might be something that we can implement moving forward. But thank you guys for your time, and look forward to the rest of the discussion.
All right, Member Villa?
I think what Board Member Rhodes is stating, and this is my view of this, but the staff reports are the reports that are noted in said resolution, and the impact on the community and the schools are receivership. This is acknowledging that we are in the place that we are in, and I believe that Rhodes has provided many staff reports, a lot of our staff has provided a lot of information on this topic up to this point in the last, you know, year or so more specifically, which is letting us know where we are today and why we are here today. And that's the way that I view a staff report, I completely understand what you're saying, but I think that the reports have been noted and are accessible, but we just, this resolution is acknowledging as a board that we are in our current situation.
No, I, I understand that, Member Villa, but I don't, I don't think that your interpretation of, or understanding what I was asking for is actually that, but I do get your saying. We're not discussing if the resolution or movement of the resolution, we're talking about how we engage. But we're talking about how we engage community, we're talking about how we better prepare, and we're, and, and how we analyze things moving forward as, as a body. And so that's what I was discussing, but once again, I look forward to the rest of the discussion, and this current discussion, I think that we can totally have at another time as we move forward as a board together.
Perfect, thank you. And I, I do want to make sure I've heard the word ceremonial resolution a couple times, and I don't want this to be interpreted as a ceremonial resolution, that this is an impactful resolution. All right, with that, I don't see any other board members with their hands up at this time. So we will move on to item seven point two. Budget and Fiscal Recovery Plan Update, Ms. Ramos?
President Pritchard, and good evening, Board Members, Superintendent, members of the public. Tonight, I'm presenting to you the Tonight, I'm presenting to you the, along with some of my cabinet members, our cabinet members, an update on the budget and fiscal recovery plan. As you may recall, we presented the fiscal recovery plan to the board in two previous recent board meetings, November 19th and December 10th. So you'll see that same plan within the presentation with additional information. Next slide, please. So the agenda for tonight is to go over a brief history and background on the district's budget. And then just to present to you again, just a quick overview of the district's current budget status and the multi-year projections based on the district's 2020-21 first interim financial report. This is the most current official financial report for the district. And then we'll go into the fiscal recovery plan discussion and then end with a summary. Just a couple of definitions, one of them, thank you, Member Rhodes, I already defined, but we'll read it nonetheless, that you'll hear some of these terms throughout the presentation. And it's important that the public and everyone understand the importance of these terms. There's lots of terms, obviously, but these are the most important ones that relate to the district's budget and the district's current financial situation. The first is one-time resources. And this is funding that is one-time in nature, not reoccurring. Examples are donations, a one-time grant, unexpended funds, or also known as carryover. And these are funds that are not, the district or an organization cannot count on being recurring. And therefore, you can't assign ongoing expenses to some of these items. These are intended for one specific purpose. Usually, a grant will define what you can buy or use these funds for. And unexpected funds simply means that there was an activity or an item that was not purchased with the intended funds in the prior year, and so these funds are being carried over. And most likely, that activity will be carried out in the coming year. And reserves are created, that's the second definition, when revenues exceed expenditures. And for K-12 districts in California, districts maintain reserves for for several reasons. But there's two very, very common one. One is required, the first, it's referred to as the reserve for economic uncertainties. And this is per the state's requirement. And there's a percentage of a district's general fund budgeted expenditures that districts have to show a reserve for. There are three percentages, it's a one, a two, or a three, and the percentage depends, it's determined by the size of the district's ADA. The larger the district, the lower the percent. For this, for our district, we are right in the middle, we're at a 2% reserve. And and so we need to be able to show the ability to satisfy this reserve, not only in the current budget year, but in our outgoing years, and that is what we refer to as the multi-year projections. The second reason that districts often maintain another reserve is that some boards have a board policy to maintain a reserve above the required reserve. And this is done for, as the definition says here, to protect against the need to reduce service levels due to a temporary revenue shortfall or an unexpected expenditure. It's kind of like a safety net and allows a board, in this particular case, a soft landing if there is a program that for whatever reason, there's a decision made by the government, government entity not to continue the funding and your midstream in this program that you would like to keep. If you have a reserve sufficient enough to continue funding to see this program fulfill its objectives, this is where you withdraw that from. So there are different reasons, and there are some boards that do have a policy. I'm going to throw out an example, some boards say that they will have a 5% reserve. And but of that 5%, you know, part of that reserve is for their economic uncertainty and the amount above that is for the district's extra reserve to to guard against any kind of temporary revenue shortfall or unexpected expenditure. And then we've talked about a structural deficit. This occurs when our ongoing expenses exceed our ongoing revenues. And so this is the state that the district finds itself in. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background on some of the district's reviews that have been conducted on its budget. You've heard some of these titles already shared with with you by our board members. A few of these independent entities include a fact finding report that was completed in 2017, a report completed by FICMAT, the Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team in 2018, the policy analysis for California Education in 2019, another updated report by FICMAT that was completed during my tenure just recently this last year. And then, of course, our ongoing analysis and review provided by the Sacramento County Office of Education. And important to say here, I'm going to stop here and explain SPOE's role. They not only provide this ongoing analysis, but they are currently our fiscal advisor. The analysis is done, or this oversight is provided to all school districts underneath their 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 review or their their supervision, regardless of the district's fiscal status. And what SPOE provides for us in that role is they review our financial reports that we submit, like our first interim, second interim, our proposed budgets, adopted budgets, and our year-end reports, as well as any major financial decisions a district is going to undertake, especially any kind of like, let's say, a salary improvement or a benefit restructure that will require ongoing resources just to confirm that a district has the ability to support those expenses. And in our case, SPOE is providing the additional oversight of fiscal advisor. And then another recent report that was completed was from by the California State Auditor in 2019. And all of these reports are available on the district's website, and they were all conducted to review the district's budget and to understand why the district, you know, is in the situation and to confirm that the district does indeed have a structural deficit. Next slide, please. And so a few themes from some of these reports. You know, we've said that, you know, we've, we're operating this structural deficit, and these reports did confirm that this is in fact the case, that this has been ongoing for several years and due to the explanation of ongoing expenditures exceeding ongoing revenues. Our biggest part of our budget is for salaries and benefits. They account for about 90% of the unrestricted budget. And and then the benefit structure, you've heard this information as well, for active employees and retirees is one of the highest in the region. We have a slide later in the presentation where we compare ourselves against some of our neighboring districts just to give you an idea of where we stand relative to their benefit structures. And then our salaries and benefits, they continue to increase, right, year over year. However, our revenue does not increase at that same rate to be able to support those salary and benefit increases. And the salaries and benefit increases are increasing for a few reasons. One, because some of our employees, of course, are still growing in their tenure here. So they're entitled to step in column, or for a classified, it's more of a column movement. And then, of course, our benefits that we have little control over with respect to the industry. Benefits are due, especially our health benefits are increasing depending on what's going on in the industry. And we can expect here to see some benefit increases due to the COVID-19 health claims. We've already been hearing the information coming from our providers. The other big cost driver for our benefits is our retirement, right? You know, our person stirs have seen increases over the recent years and will continue to see increases over the next few years. So this, these are areas that are, that the district has little control over in terms of controlling those cost increases. Next slide, please. Some other themes that came out of these reviews were these items here. The first is the methodology that the district uses to develop their budgets. And these are very common methodologies that I'm just going to, you know, list a few here for you that K-12 districts use throughout the state. We all use the Department of Finance factors and planning, they're called planning factors. And you'll find the list of planning factors in all of our financial reports, our interim reports and our adopted budget that we submit to the board. So for reference, the last financial report that we submitted to you all was the first interim in December. You could find the list of the Department of Finance planning factors on page 16 of the executive summary for our first interim report. And it'll list things like the COLA that we're using, it'll list our STIRS and PERS rates, our lottery, our preschool rates, our routine restrictive maintenance account information. And if you, you know, review other district website budgets, you'll see that this common planning factor sheet list included in their budget development process. And other factors that we use, we rely also on and on experts in the industry such as FICMAT. They provide lots of tools and resources for school districts. They are the the developers of the local control funding formula calculator that we use to determine our funding. And they provide updates to this and as well as, you know, a series of workshops and information and publications. They help interpret the state budget and and issue alerts to school districts also in their planning of the budget. And then other group, other organizations that we rely on, of course, are like capital advisors, school services, and SPOE, Sacramento County Office of Education. So these are all common resources that districts use in developing and building the methodology that they use to develop their budgets and then disclosing this information to the public and the board. The other thing that came out of this, the persistent imbalance in in our expenses exceeding revenues. And again, this is another way of saying the structural deficit. And we put another extra little bullet here to say that this is what make, create a little bit of confusion for for some folks is that when we closed the books last year, we ended the year with a surplus, meaning that for 1920, our revenue did exceed our expenses. And the reason for that was because we did have one-time savings due to having to close schools right around the beginning of March. And of course, this was because of COVID-19. We did realize savings in utilities and supplies and services, and we provided a list of what all those savings were. But those are one-time savings, right? It's it's no different than a household budget. Some people may have seen refunds coming back to you from some of your auto insurance policies or maybe your gym dues were suspended for a few months. But you know that once businesses, you know, go back to normal business as usual, those expenses are coming back unless you you choose to to terminate those expenses. But so those are considered one-time savings or nothing that you can count on to be recurring for the future. And so this is the same thing that happened to the district and many districts in the state. They all saw the surplus this one year, and we should expect to see the same thing. As we shared with you when we were developing the budget, that we built the budget assuming that we were not going to reopen schools for about, maybe about four or five months in the beginning of this of this school year, the 2020-21. Now, here we are in January, and it's probably not going to happen anytime soon. So we will have to adjust the budget again to reflect an updated one-time savings in those same categories because we have not reopened schools. And so please do not be surprised when you see a surplus in some of these operating expenses line items when we get to year end. And we'll try to update the budget so that we reflect the savings, you know, to to the current budget. It just becomes a little tricky in the event that we are able to expand in some of our services and then we do need to tap into, because the last thing we want to do is cut the budget too much, and then we find ourselves, you know, in a in a worse situation where we over projected savings. But again, we'll share, we'll continue to share information on how we're trending in this area. So the last bullet here is that the district has managed the deficit with one-time resource, resources and reserves. And this is not a sustainable plan because eventually you'll get to that point where you deplete them. This is again, the same example of a household budget that loses income indefinitely, and they did have some reserves in their savings account. But at some point, they will utilize all of those savings unless the revenue is restored to the previous level or expenses are reduced to match their ongoing revenue. Next slide, please. And just to remind everyone of our last financial report, the district's last financial report we submitted to you all. This was the first interim report for this current year, 2020-21. And I'm not going to read every single line, but just highlight there the deficit spending where we're at. This year, we were projecting as a first interim, again, I emphasize first interim, that we had a deficit of about 31 million. Next year, we were projecting that deficit deficit to grow to 38.9. And finally, the third year, that deficit was projected to grow to 56 million. Now, please understand that this is as a first interim, which did not take into consideration the governor's proposed budget or any of our updated information with respect to our unduplicated pupil count or with respect to any of our one-time savings. Next slide, please. So what we've done for you is we took that same information from first interim and we said, okay, let's, now that we've received this information from the governor and we know that, you know, we are, we're making progress, a lot of great progress to collect our data for our unduplicated count, let's go ahead and model some of those numbers to see what, how that would impact the district's budget. So what you're going to see here in that bottom half of that slide is some shaded rows there that that apply to each of these categories, and I'm going to read these to you. So let's just take our deficit that we shared in the previous slide and go midway down this slide to that line that starts with 31 million in red, deficit spending as a first interim budget. Right beneath that line is the first row, that yellow highlight that is, it says, adjust UPP percentage at 71.8%. I apologize for the acronym, but we have so much limited space, we have little space on these slides. UPP is our unduplicated percentage count. This is part of our funding formula that we get from the state for our schools, for our students. And not all districts get this, you have to qualify for this. This is based on our populations of students, our free and reduced lunch, our foster youth, our EL population and so forth. And but in order to get this funding, we have to qualify for it and we have to be able to justify by ways of data. We have to collect information from our students and confirm that, yes, in fact, they fall into one of these categories. Well, what happened in the beginning of the school year, we saw dramatic decline in enrollment, not just in general enrollment, but also in our collection of data for this, these populations of students, such that we were at risk of losing about $6 million. And that was pretty devastating because that will impact our current year and just further contribute to our deficit. So our staff recognized this very early on as we tracked this information very closely. And so they they immediately went into a a mode of correcting this immediately and very proactive mode and and launched a campaign and did a tremendous amount of work during the winter break to try to collect as much data as possible. And just to put it into context, prior to the 71.8%, let's say, prior to COVID, the district was trending at about 72%. In the fall, when we recognized we had a problem in this area, we dropped down to about 68%. That was, that's pretty significant, that's about a $6 million loss. So staff quickly went into this corrective action mode and launched a campaign and reached out to parents and students and started communicating, please collect, you know, can you please help us help the district? And they were able to get us just about up, back up to that 72%, which is pretty remarkable. So a lot of work that went into this, you know, we can't thank staff enough for doing this. This happened over the winter break, lots of phone calls, late nights, weekend work that went into it. And so we were able to recover that $6 million this year. And because what happened at first interim, we had to disclose that this was the loss we were facing, and it was built into the budget. And so the loss carries throughout the all three years. So what you're seeing in this yellow line is a restoration of that potential loss, so great news there.
Yeah, and Ms. Ramos, if I can just interject, then again, Ms. Ramos mentioned staff. I I just want to confirm and and acknowledge, this is everyone from principals and many of our teachers centrally here, staff like Rhonda Rodey. We had a cross collaboration effort taking place here, meeting on a regular basis, trying to determine the best ways and the best approaches. So you may remember board members and community members, lots of email messages, lots of outreach done through our communications department. So I I do want to acknowledge those efforts. But when Ms. Ramos says staff, please think, know that that this is at the at the site level. I know board members were very engaged in this as well. And of course, here at the district office, a cross-departmental effort that that was just remarkable because we were very, very concerned about this when we presented it in first interim.
Thank you, Superintendent. So moving on to the next row here, which are in orange, adjust for potential COLA of plus 3.84% in 21-22. This is from the governor's proposal that we all heard in January, great news, and we are certainly banking on this holding, right? So we've included this here, we've calculated, it's a rough approximate calculation what that would mean for the district should that hold through the enacted budget. And I'm going to stop there and explain that for a minute. The way the the state budget works is that in January, the governor unveils his ideas, his proposals, his or hers, whoever, you know, is in office for the coming budget year. And they have a whole list of items that they'd like to see included in the budget year for the coming year. And then what happens after, and this is revealed in January. And then what happens after, and this is revealed in January, that's referred to the January proposal. Um, after those few months, and there's a lot of negotiation that happens at the Capitol, and um and some items may change, and the districts continue to get information. Well, there's going to be a trade-off. Instead of doing this, we're going to do this. Instead of funding this area, this area is going to be funded. And then about, maybe in about March, April, we start hearing that the governor is going to revise their proposals. And so you'll you'll hear this term called the May revise. In May revise, there's this new um information that's sent out from the state that says, this is the governor's May revise, the revisions for the proposed budget of the coming year. Still not enacted, still not approved, they're just the revisions to the proposal. So school districts use that revision to build their budget for the coming year because, mind you, we're already in May. By May, we need to be wrapping up our budget to be sharing with the public and the board for adoption in June. Yet, the state has not yet adopted or enacted the state budget. That does not happen until mid-June, after school districts have already taken action to approve their budget. So um I know lots of information there, but I just really want to emphasize that because this is not a done deal yet, that's the point of me sharing this with you. This is simply a first proposal. We are certainly hopeful that it'll hold throughout, you know, until the budget gets enacted. So that's, you know, I just wanted to alert and and just inform the public about that. So assuming this stays, roughly, this is what the district will get, about fifteen-point-four next year and then fifteen-point-three in that third year. And then also in the proposal, there was a tiny COLA of one-point-two-eight percent for the third year, and that uh comes out to about five-point-three-million dollars. And then finally, in that blue line, um, we need to make sure that we include our enrollment decline because we're trending trending a little bit higher in our enrollment decline than what we had originally projected prior to COVID nineteen. We're seeing that some of our students are um did not come back at the at the same rate that we expected um by about an additional six-hundred students. And so um this is going to uh cost the district in the third year. You may be wondering why not next year? Because under uh the provisions that the governor put in place to mitigate the impact of COVID nineteen, um, we are held harmless this year in our enrollment decline. And then next year is based on this current year. And so therefore, we we would be held harmless another year. However, once we get to the third year, that provision does not apply to that third year. So assuming that this six-hundred decline holds, this is how much we stand to lose. So again, this is part of our budget um assumptions, and these are a part of our budgeting methodologies that we need to disclose to you all, what are some of our opportunities as well as risks? And then to be able to share with you, how likely is it that those opportunities will will, you know, come, will actually happen? And how likely is it that the the risks will happen? So this is why, you know, board members share that um our budgets are a little complicated and they're ever-changing, and hopefully this, you know, these just few, three areas here, you know, I I hope that kind of revealed why why that is such. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide is one that we shared also in our initial fiscal recovery plan. It's a little busy slide, but we wanted to share with the public, if the district were to achieve savings or reductions equal to our projected deficit, what would that do to the budget in our our multi-year projections? What would that look like? So let's take that thirty-three million, let's be very optimistic and take that revised thirty-three-million-dollar deficit, assuming that everything happens, this assuming is the COLA, the projected enrollment reductions, et cetera, that all that comes to pass. Um, and let's inject that in next year's budget, twenty-one twenty-two. That's what you see in that pink-shaded center box, thirty-three-million dollars in reductions, ongoing reductions. So we put that in there, and now let's see what it does to that third year. Well, as you see in the third year, it addresses the deficit almost entirely, except for about five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I mean, that's that's pretty much we've resolved our deficit issue. Um, so we're pretty close. So this is the impact of in of implementing reductions equal to the deficit. Because we hear questions about the deficit and how, you know, how would you resolve that? And, you know, resolving it is another matter, but to apply the amount that you are deficit spending by impacts your budget in this manner. And this is where the di- district would be able to certify their budget most likely as positive. You know, we would um eliminate the risk of fiscal insolvency, et cetera. So next slide, please. This is another scenario. This is assuming that we're only able to achieve about fifteen-million dollars in ongoing reductions. And the reason we picked fifteen-million dollars, we didn't pick it, we used some of the items in the fiscal recovery plan because we know that in total, the fiscal recovery plan that was presented isn't sufficient. Uh, but that those were the items that were within the district's control to be able to make budget decisions on because the bulk of the items um are are items that require negotiations. So applying the fifteen million um next year as well, um, has this impact on the budget? Fifteen million ongoing, so you show it in both years. And so what it does, it does reduce your deficit, but it doesn't eliminate it. You'll see in that third year, that bottom pink shaded line there, bar, um, in that third year, your your, the district is still operating at about an eighteen-point-five-million-dollar deficit. And again, these are simply projections, and that we're just modeling for you numbers just to kind of put it in context and to give you an example of the impact of um of some of these assumptions. Next slide, please. So consequences, um, we've shared this information in the past because we were asked, you know, what happens if um we don't um implement reductions necessary? Um, what happens, you know, with fiscal um insolvency? And so we provided some some information for you here. Um, as a first interim, um, as you read, the district is projected to experience some serious cash challenges by March of twenty twenty-two. And if we don't address this, we will be at risk of an emergency apportionment or a state loan. And I'll go into the um cash flow challenges a little more in a in a future slide because we we made a couple of uh points about cash challenges in the presentation, provided two different dates, and I want to explain that, but I'll explain that in a different slide. Um, next slide, please. So consequences if reductions are not achieved. Um, so AB twelve hundred, which guides school districts, um, states that, you know, that provides for oversight um uh points for for districts to make sure that districts adequately prepare to meet their financial obligations. So this is why we are required to show and 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 be able to find not only our budget year, but our two-out years, which we refer to as the multi-year projections. We need to be able to show that, given this information, these resources of this expense, these expenses, a district is um fiscally solvent and can meet its financial obligations. This came as a result of districts um back, I don't know how long ago, probably twenty-five, thirty years ago, um, facing fiscal insolvency. AB twelve hundred and some of these regulations were not in place, and so districts were not projecting out and were not able to foresee that they were at at risk of fiscal insolvency. And I want to say, um, I I think it was a little bit before my time, it was um maybe Richmond, which now is West Pontiacosta, was one of those districts in those early years that um was not, did not have the this kind of protection to help them foresee something like this. So um, so if we don't achieve the reductions, then there's poss- the possibility of the trigger for a state loan, right? Or cash insolvency, we run out of money, we can't pay our bills, and we can't make payroll. So conditions for a state loan. Uh, per Assembly Bill eighteen-four forty, the responsibilities shift to the state, which shift to the county, then shift to the county superintendent, which uh CSSS, who assumes all legal rights, duties and powers of the governing board of the district. And so um and of course, the county has uh the the right, the authority to appoint an administrator to act on behalf of the county and to oversee the district and make decisions. So basically, the district, district's board becomes an advisory board only. All control is lost at that point. Next slide, please. And what we provided for you, and some of you are already familiar with this, is just an example of some of our districts are very close by districts that are currently um under a receivership, or they currently have a loan, I should say. And uh so this is straight from CDE website. You can um please, by all means, visit the website and and take a look. And so we've provided a few examples here for you. We've provided Vallejo, Oakland, and West Pontiacosta, used to be Richmond, um, just to give you an idea of how much their loans were. And I really want to um emphasize one column here, the interest. And this is, this was an estimate as a first interim because that interest probably has changed, it's probably grown a little, um, for the first two districts at least. Um, so these districts, not only that they have to, you know, take out this loan, they also have to pay interest. It's really important that the board and the public understand that this is not a free loan. This is a loan that costs money. So, and it's a loan, that it's a loan, it's not a gift. It has to be repaid along with the interest. So now, a district is not only uh facing all these reductions, but now a district has even more of a deficit, right? Because now they have to repay a loan plus the interest on top of that loan. So here's a couple of examples for you. Um, next slide, please. Um, so again, here, continuing along, uh, consequences of the reductions are not achieved and a state loan is triggered. What happens is that, again, the district's uh debt is not white clean. Um, there are reductions that are imposed on the district, so meaning either we make the cuts while we have control, or we allow ourselves to go down that path of fiscal insolvency. And once we're down that path, then the reductions will be imposed on the district, and we have no control over what those reductions look like. Um, the reductions are meant to be sufficient to resolve the insolvency, meaning resolve the deficit plus repay the loan plus the interest. So now we're looking at a much, much bigger uh reduction. Um, and the next bullet just speaks to that. So the imposed reductions are greater than the targets that the district had, you know, prior to insolvency, and which translates into additional program services and staffing being reduced to to achieve these new target amounts. Next slide, please. And again, just for the public, just a reminder, the district has been making reductions in the last few years, um, quite a bit, um, they're pretty substantial. So we just provided a very, very high-level summarized uh table for you just so you can see over the last two years how much the district has reduced. And this is in millions, starting with December of twenty eighteen up to September of twenty nineteen. Why did we stop there? Because these were all the reductions that the district was able to make that did not require negotiations, but were within the district's um control to reduce. Not that they were not um, you know, difficult reductions because there were uh staffing adjustments and staffing reductions and programs were reduced um as well, um, as, you know, other items and other, you know, savings that were utilized. So there were quite a bit. Um, the the columns are not summarized, but just for your information, and ongoing reductions, it's a little over fifty million, and in the one time, that column comes out to a little bit over six million. So so quite a bit of reductions that were were made already. Next slide, please. So now to to shift over to some of the items that um were, that have been shared with you. These are the um items that that require negotiations. Um, you've heard these discussions before, health benefits, and these are just examples. This is um just to share with you, what if, you're like, what if? So if the district was able to share in the cost of health benefits with our employees to a um employee-only paid-for plan and seventy-five percent paid for the other um plus one and family, the potential savings is about um set eighteen-point-seven per year. The same thing if we had a shared cost for dental and vision. In this particular model, it'd be about three million. Um, if we exercised a cash-in-lua benefits, and we assume a three-percent participation, this is something very common in other organizations, roughly about one-point-four million. Um, if we shared a little bit in our OPEC contribution, possibly two million there. And then there's some other contract items that have escalation factors, meaning that there 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 are no limits in some items. And um and so the district always has to keep pace with those increasing um costs. And uh and so depending on what items we selected and we agreed on, you know, that's a to be determined amount. Um, a furlough day, a cost of one day district-wide is about the one-point-seven. A one-percent increase or just decrease district-wide is about three-point-four million. Next slide, please. And then we took some of this information and we um we uh separated it out for you by general fund and the unrestricted area and the restricted area. And then we also looked at our other funds because we have to remember that we also have personnel costs and operating costs in our other funds. So if we make changes to the general fund, most likely those other funds will also um be subject to those same changes. It was important to 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 segregate those items. And then the bottom table is simply just um a a percentage of our benefits to our um total budget, just so that, and this is our revised adopted budget information for you. Next slide, please. Now, these are um some some comparisons I did say earlier that I was going to share with you, how the district compares to our neighboring districts. And please know that this data is taken from a twenty-nineteen twenty J ninety report. And the reason we're using this report is because this report provides information on our neighboring districts, and we wanted to be able to share with you a comparison. Now, we know that most of these costs have probably have gone up. We know that we are looking at our our district health benefit increases of maybe double digits, about ten, eleven percent is what we're hearing from our providers. Um, and we'll share that information with you um in the coming weeks or months, definitely by second interim. But let's get back to this slide. So um you'll see that for comparing to our neighboring districts based on this data, we are at the top when it comes to contributing to our um active employees' um health benefit cost compared to our neighbors. So a couple of columns there, these, the first one is per FTE, meaning per full-time equivalent. And then the next uh column is the maximum district contribution, assuming the um most expensive plan, that's thirty-one thousand per FTE. Next slide, please. And these are some other comparisons, how we can compare to our other neighbors, um, our average daily sub-costs. You'll see that we're at the top there as well. Next slide, please. And this one's not in yellow highlights, sorry about that. This is our uh summer school teaching uh pay rates compared to our neighbors. We're at the top. And next slide, please. And now we're into our fiscal recovery plan discussion. And I will pause, Superintendent, is there, before I start with these slides, would you have to say anything?
Uh, no, not at all. I mean, um, I would just mention, board members, that um I I know that it was a series of slides that Miss Ramos presented, twenty slides thus far, uh, really intended to just give you an overview, a reminder, in some cases, new information as a result of uh plugging in numbers uh that um are attributed to the governor's proposal. I do want, of course, mention, and we have board members that spend their day, most of their day uh at the Capitol and dealing with these matters. Um, this is uh really taking information that we know is uncertain at this time uh and um being as optimistic as possible. Uh, so that is new information in terms of the uh the the number shifting from that fifty-six-million dollars uh that we presented in first interim to thirty-three-million dollars that we're presenting again on the assumption that a governor's proposal in January might stick uh throughout the budget development process. Who knows if that's the case or not? But we thought that it was important for you to be able to see what, how that, how that uh information might um uh uh impact your discussion. I know that Member Rhodes at our last board meeting uh asked questions about uh the budget proposal that the governor has had released, and at the time, I think it was the day of the release of the proposal. So now we're coming back with some uh some some information as best as we've been able to calculate, again, using uh all of those industry standards and the tools that uh Miss Ramos mentioned, uh, which I think um I I I I appreciate, Miss Ramos, uh, just a reminder to the board and to our community of the methodology that you utilize uh as our CBO and work with others to make sure that we're presenting uh as accurate of a budget uh picture as possible. Uh, we would then move now uh onto uh a a discussion based on presenting information from the December fiscal recovery plan that we presented uh by sharing additional information uh in categories of 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 areas that we're hoping will elicit some discussion from the board uh as we would then prepare as a staff to come back with another iteration of that fiscal recovery plan that you would uh take action on February fourth. Um, and so we look forward to the discussion. Uh, there are various slides. Um, I would ask that the board just try to keep track of the different categories that we're going to be presenting uh as you think about questions and comments. And then again, hopefully, a discussion that will help guide us as your staff to come back on February fourth.
Thank you. Okay, so here is the categories the Superintendent mentioned. Um, we have about six categories. Um, and please keep in mind, this is the same fiscal recovery plan we shared in November and December. We just put them in these categories um in order to to simplify the discussion. Um, the first one is those elements of the plan that are above the staffing formulas. The second is those that are subject to the March fifteenth or sixty-day layoff notice. And then those, number three, that are not subject to this layoff notice. And the fourth is um those that if adopted, um, would eliminate an entire program or department. And the fifth one is that those if uh that could be implemented in twenty-one twenty-two or if uh where further studying would be necessary in order to develop new models for continued programming. And then the final one is And then the final one is those that um possibly a one-time funding sources could be used while looking for additional ongoing savings. Or reducing expenses. So with that, let's move on to the first slide, the next slide please. And this is just a recap. This is the same slide that we shared with you all. I just wanted to remind everyone. That this was shared in the November and the December tenth, and you're going to be seeing this same information in a little more detail and in those categories just listed. And what we've done is we provided a reference column over to the very left, one, two, three, four. There's a few more in the next slide. So that as you're looking at the slides that are coming up, you can always go back to this reference to 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 know which category. Which line item that item belongs to. Next slide please. Um, and here's the balance of those, the other programs, references five through eleven. Okay, same information. So let's go on to the next slide. All right, so here is our first category. This is those items that um. Will be aligning staffing to the formulas as um as provided with uh the district staffing ratios or the collective bargaining. And so there's this list of items that um these reductions will simply align all of these different areas to staffing ratios. And so you'll see that we have the potential cost savings and then the 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 category aligning to staffing formula. And then under the reduction item, the titles. So you have, here's where we have the social workers, the assistant principals, the counselors. Classified staff. FTE above formula base. And I'm going to stop here and explain, there's an asterisk there. Because um this is the way we presented it to you, but then in a future slide, we provided all the details. What is that three point three? And you're going to get those details um in the next couple of slides. And I'll remind you when we get to that point. And then the next one under that is inclusive practices, um charter contribution, our preschool contribution, the Waldorf. And the dual immersion. And the total of these, um by aligning these, the district would uh save about ten point four million dollars. Next slide please. Now, these are all the items that are subject to the March fifteenth or sixty-day layoff notice. Um, and of course, these all have to do with staffing, all right? Um, and so some of these items, you're going to see that they are going to show up. In multiple categories, right? Because some of them could be, they could be in both, aligning to staffing formula and subject to the March fifteenth or sixty-day layoff notice. So please don't, you know, don't misunderstand that it's not a duplication. It just means that they they apply to to different cat, to the same category. Multiple categories. Um, so the first is social workers again, assistant principals, counselors, classified staff. That FTE again, the inclusive practices, because that's FTE, the charter contribution. Uh, transportation and the preschool contribution. Next slide please. And um there's, these are additional programs that are subject to the layoff notice. So you'll see those, all those different categories. So this slide combined with the other slide is about sixteen point five million dollars. And items that are subject to the March fifteenth or sixty-day layoff notice because they have staffing within these um line items. Next slide please. So here is the details for that three point three million dollars. Um, these are FTE formulas, I mean, I'm sorry, at school sites. And these are FTE that are above formula. These are programs that are, um, some of these are specialized programs. Or they're smaller programs, but nonetheless, um, the FTE is required so that students do receive the appropriate um coursework. That they need in order to meet the requirements of either graduations or 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 promoting on to the next grade. And um you'll see Rosa Parks listed here, John Still, MLK, LDB. Um, SBS, Kit Carson, Caleb Greenwood, Health professions. Along with the FTE and the particular type of FTE for each of these schools that um require additional FTE above the base. And then the dollar amount in the potential cost savings. And then these are subject to the March fifteen or sixty-day layoff notice. Next slide please. Now, these are items that are in the fiscal recovery recovery plan that are not subject to the layoff notice. Such as supplies, professional development, travel, the IB and AP tests of the GATE program. The elementary sports, the college and career visits, and the slight discretionary supplies. So the potential cost savings for those items is about two million dollars. Next slide please. Um, these now are if um items within the fiscal recovery plan. If these were approved, these programs would be eliminated. Um, because of the um impact to their 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 pro, the bu, the budget reduction to their their program would essentially eliminate their program. The first is elementary sports, college and career visits, safe schools, improvement, accountability and school support. And the total is about two point seven, two point eight million dollars there. Next slide please. Now, these are items that require further study um for a potential restructure. Um, should, you know, the district decide that, you know, these programs um should should require further analysis to to possibly redesign. Or restructure. And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. Again, over to the very left, there's the reference to the twelve, ten, twenty plan with the number. So if you ever want to go back and, you know, tie it back to the original plan, the numbers there listed for you. So here we have um the programs that our program side of the house um has determined that these are the the programs. That would require further restructure. There's several of them there, and that's about six and a half million dollars. Um, next slide please. I know it's in tiny print. These are the programs that would not uh restructure uh or redesign would not be applicable. And so for these programs, you can certainly provide, you know, more um information. Um, my colleagues, cabinet members are here. To provide more information on why they would not be subject to a program restructuring. Should that be part of your discussion or your questions as you um continue the discussion on the. Fiscal recovery plan. Um, next slide please. Um, now, these are the few items that we were able to identify and say, yes, these items and these dollar amounts could be funded with temporary CARES funding. And we emphasize temporary because this is an example, one-time funding, but these are ongoing expenses, right? However, we can, we can use these funding because we know that our social workers and some of our counselors and especially our after-school program with our learning hubs. Is in fact engaged in activities to mitigate the impact of COVID nineteen. However, this is not an ongoing funding source. We um were fortunate enough to receive the second round of stimulus funds. So at the most, we might have enough to fund maybe these programs for another year, year and a half or two years. But again, this is a board decision and for discussion. And these, the ones that certainly met the criteria of CARES funding. Um, there were no other available funding sources for the other categories. As you know, our restricted funds are pretty restricted to certain activities. That are already in place within the district. So we would have to reduce one restricted program in order to find a brand new one. And and we would be back to the same position that we're in right now. Um, next slide please.
Um, if we can. Thank you, Mr. Flores. I just did want to mention that uh this is really just a point in time, board members. Um, Rose Ramos has been working very closely with our SCOWI partner Superintendent Gordon, who joins us this evening as well. We do want to make sure that um we do everything that we can to look into any other appropriate use of CARES funding. So as you kind of look at the other categories, please do keep in mind that as you might hear of other uh districts. Using CARES funding uh for purposes that might uh provide one-time savings, temporary savings to us. Uh, please do keep us posted. But uh again, this is where we feel comfortable uh conveying to the board. Uh, that we feel this would be an appropriate use of CARES funding. Uh, but do know that we are exploring as much as we can, whether there might be other uh flexibilities available to us. Uh, for other areas that are included in the FRP. We know that some of them clearly would not be allowable. Uh, but we are doing everything we can to explore other flexibilities.
Thank you. Next slide please. Okay, and so we're pretty much at the end of the presentation, and I just wanted to summarize um the cash flow. Um, because we do have two different dates and wanted to explain that a little more. Um, we are projecting that we're going to have some cash flow challenges starting in May twenty twenty-one. And this is mainly due to just dry period um cash flow issue. This is not um because we're, you know, headed towards fiscal insolvency. And this is very common for school districts. For us this year, the reason it's a little bit more common and like many districts is because, as you know. As part of the state budget solution last year, there were these deferrals that were imposed on um school districts. Um, that is how the state uh was able to 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 resolve their budget issues by withholding um our apportionment. Our monthly apportionment that we we get, we receive to the to future months. And so the impact of doing that, it's, for example, let's say that your employer said, oh, our organization is having some serious um cash flow or some financial issues. Um, we're going to give you your paycheck, but we're not going to give it to you for about three months down the road. Well, that's not very helpful to you because you still have bills to pay. So you have to find a way to mitigate the impact of not getting your paycheck on time. And so what, it's very unfair, I, we agree, but it is what we were dealt with. So what school districts have to do is that um we have to find a way to resolve this. It isn't our necessarily um something that we caused. That we ran out of cash. It's that our cash didn't come when it was supposed to. So what we're doing to mitigate that impact of that um debt deferral is that we can do one of these things. We can either borrow from our other funds, which, you know, we can do, we have board resolutions to do that, but sometimes it's not enough. And because we're a very large district and we just don't have that kind of funds in our other funds, that they don't have that kind of of resources. Um, or we can take out a short-term loan and we have to pay for the cost of doing that. And so we are in the process of of of, we are applying for a TRAN. We did apply for it. We haven't executed it fully yet. You'll receive more information on that in the coming weeks. Um, and but we, it's a short-term, it's referred to as a TRAN, a Temporary Revenue Anticipation Note, which is going to be repaid. And uh and there is interest on that, but in this particular TRAN, the cost is very low. Because we were able to participate in a statewide TRAN um that pulled together all the resources. So that our borrowing cost would be much lower. And for the district, please understand that our credit rating has suffered under our um, our our fiscal challenges. Such that if we were to go out on a TRAN on our own, um, it might be very difficult to get a loan. And if we did, it would be very expensive for us. So we were very fortunate to be able to be part of this pool, should we have to get a TRAN. The other thing we did was we applied for a waiver of the cash deferrals. And I know board members, um, you're anxious to get a response. And we've not heard back and we've been checking with our um, our uh, our advisors. Um, so just full services to see if there's any information on this. And to date, we've not heard anything on our waiver. So in the event that our waiver is approved, then we possibly would not need a TRAN. And so we could, you know, save that um interest, that interest cost there. So so the May twenty-one cash flow issue is, is going to be mitigated. That we have resources to be able to to weather through that one. However, if we don't achieve a fiscal recovery plan uh and implement one by July one. Then we were going to be headed down that road of exhausting our resources to get to the point where eventually we do deplete our cash. Right now, based on first interim, that's looking like roughly around March twenty twenty-two. Um, but again, I got to emphasize that's first interim. It doesn't take into consideration the governor's uh proposal. Because we don't know if that's certain. And then uh we don't know how much of a surplus yet we will end this year with. Which might, you know, push this date to maybe another month or so, right? Um, because our cash flow needs are pretty, are pretty large. Um, if you look at our cash flow reports. So more to come in this area and we'll keep you posted here. And of course, though, these fiscal responsibilities will continue until our structural deficit is resolved. And um, and with that, I believe, next slide please. Uh, oh, just a report, a reminder that, you know, we always have to include with our financial reports. A certification of whether or not we're able to meet our financial obligations for the current and to uh subsequent years. So far, we've been filing negative because we cannot um satisfy this requirement. Um, and we filed negative at um first interim. And so your next financial report will be a second interim, which will be presented in March. And I believe that does conclude the presentation and superintendent, I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, well, thank you. No, I I will turn it back over to President Pritchett at this point um for continued discussion on this item.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Rose, for that presentation. Um, I know that that wasn't an easy one. Um, do we have any public comment?
We do. We have four live comments and thirty-eight written comments on this item.
Okay, so um with that, uh individual comments shall be no more than two minutes for for live comments. And um and then the remaining, then the total time for public comment on each agenda item shall be fifteen minutes. Um, so as we go through live comments, I'll be keeping track of the time. And then for the written comments, um, if we have additional time, I'll ask you to read. The um, a few of the written comments. And the remaining written comments were all sent out to board members um for each of us to read. Member Morowski.
Oh, thank you. I just, I wanted to recognize uh that with this item, there are many different items kind of within it. And uh so people may be writing in on different topics and wonder if we could.
That's a good point.
Provide additional time, you know, maybe, maybe no more than fifteen minutes per kind of single topic. But there's like twenty different, you know, I I just, I feel like um we should hear, hear the different comments, so.
I can break it down if you like.
That would be fantastic if you could do that, Anne.
Um, we have for just IV programs, we have eight. For Caleb Greenwood specifically, there is four. For Kit Carson specifically, there is ten. For Leonardo, Leonardo da Vinci specifically, there is ten. Um, for various extracurricular programs, there are three. And for budget cuts in general, there are three.
Okay, so is it the board's desire to hear fifteen minutes on each of those uh of those topics? Okay, all right, I got a thumbs up. Okay, go ahead with the live comments, Anne.
Okay, our first um comment, live comment is from Daryl Darby. Mr. Darby, are you there?
Okay, so are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, board. Um, listening to tonight's presentations and prior board meetings. Um, there seems to be a disagreement in terms of what the actual numbers are. Or maybe I should say how the numbers are actually interpreted. I would like, if in any way possible, for everybody to get together and to be able to agree on one set of numbers. Now, I heard the responses earlier to the resolution. And I agree with um member Rhodes's comments and insights that he gave on that. I believe that there are reasonable people on all sides of this issue between uh the district and its labor partners. And I've always felt that reasonable people can come to reasonable agreements. So I firmly believe that agreements can be made. And I would like the board and everybody to come to some type of agreement with their labor partners, what the numbers are. Such that those agreements can be made. Because it seems that until we all agree on the same set of numbers and what they mean. Uh, getting an agreement is going to be, how do we say, difficult? So I would hope that uh everybody comes together on the numbers and then from the numbers move forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Our next public comment is from Allison French-Tubo.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I would like to comment really quickly on some of the specific cuts to school sites and the overall structure. Some of the cuts in the FRP will be incurable. For example, to cut the staffing that makes an inclusionary classroom possible. And to cut the staffing for career technical education at a school based on career technical education is to gut those programs and harm the students relying on them. Just as the district was formed for the purpose of educating students, programs like inclusionary practices and the School of Engineering and Sciences. Were designed for the purpose of serving students who historically have been underserved by our district. I don't want to seem insensitive to how staff will be affected if pay and benefit cuts are instituted. I do know personally how that feels and it is hard and painful. I am a state worker whose pay has been cut this year and our family has been through the. Having the portion of health insurance we pay increased. The difference is that for my family and many others, this happened with the downturn after the dot-com bubble burst in two thousand. And in the Great Recession of two thousand seven to two thousand nine. SAC City's compensation structure has been an historical anomaly for quite some time. And delaying alignment with the districts around us has only made the anomaly more apparent and done nothing to solve it. I call on all our trustees to acknowledge that the deficit budget structure can't be corrected only by cutting programs and supplies and that they were. only by cutting programs and supplies and that they were elected to make these tough decisions, not to pass them off to a receiver who will have debt service as a top priority. I call on all our labor partners to acknowledge that their positions in compensation won't be stable over the long term in a district and receivership, that concerning trends in enrollment decline will likely magnify under receivership as those with the means to leave will do so. We need the board to approve a resolution that resolves to maintain and improve students and direct staff to negotiate with labor partners to align compensation. Just as the governor directed Cal HR to negotiate with the state's labor partners to achieve the savings that resulted in my pay cut. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. French-Tubo. Our next two commenters that requested to speak live, Renee Webster-Hawkins and Angel White. I do not see them online. So I can go to the written comments.
Yes, that would be great, Ann. Thank you.
Thank you. The first grouping is for IB programs. And President Pritchett, these will be one minute apiece. Is that correct?
Pin-shitting. Yeah, so how many did you say for IB programs? Were there eight?
There, there are eight.
Yeah, so I think you can, you can read them. And if it, if it goes to 15 minutes, then we'll cut it off there.
Okay. So this first comment is from Daniel Ruiz and says, I'm writing to voice my strong opposition to the recommended reductions of certificated staff at school sites with specialty programs, including Kit Carson and Caleb Greenwood. Because these cuts would eliminate the IB coordinator position, these reductions would mean the elimination of the IB programs at these schools. As you likely know, both campuses have had significant enrollment increases and improvements in test scores since becoming IB certified schools. These programs draw families into our district and keep families in our district. And as such, they pay for themselves. I am a strong proponent of public schools. My grandsons are fifth graders and eighth graders, have attended SCUSD schools since kindergarten. But without these programs, we will likely leave the district. I understand for my daughter that the home high school for River Park is Rosemont, a 30-minute drive each direction. That's unacceptable. Now, thanks to the new programming at Kit, we finally have a great option for high school. We owe it to our children to preserve this program. I urge you to protect this growing, promising program. Being a former internal audit director for a $20 billion corporation and a process improvement consultant at major consulting firms such as IBM, I am pretty qualified at identifying missed opportunities and helping turn things around. Just one example, I am wondering if you have done any benchmarking with other school districts that got themselves into financial difficulties. I'm surprised that you, as a board, let yourself get into this financial situation. I know the COVID pandemic hurt the situation, but from what I've learned so far, that is not the main cause, but just the tipping point. I plan to take a further look at the presentation for this agenda item to see if I can see any obvious faults. Getting rid of the IB program after it has done so much to improve your educational goals seems not to make sense. The next comment is from Brenda Mark and says, I am a parent to an eighth grade student at Kit Carson as well as a fifth grade student at Caleb Greenwood. I'm writing to voice my strong opposition to the recommended reductions of certificated staff at school sites with specialty programs, including Kit Carson and Caleb Greenwood. Because these cuts would eliminate IB coordinator positions, these reductions would mean the elimination of the IB programs at these schools. And it looks like a lot of the rest of this comment is the same as the previous one. So I'll go to the next one. And this is from Kara Sinhorst and says, Members of the Board and Superintendent Aguilar, forget the oversized reserve fund. Forget the errors of the past. Forget one-time funds and CARES Act money. Already, we recently learned squandered on air filters that won't do the job and may poison our kids with formaldehyde. The 2122 budget originally included an estimate of a COLA of zero. The actual COLA announced by the governor is 3.84%. That's a difference of $14.5 million. How many times are we going to get more money and still be told it's not enough? And that we have to cut music, IB, preschool, social workers, counselors? Truly, who thinks it's a good idea to cut these things? The money is literally sitting right there to pay for these programs and people. I understand all your quote, "one-time," quote, "unrestricted," unquote jargon, but here's what's happening. Enough money exists to continue to serve the students of this district and you just don't want to. You want to do what you've done for years, convince the community that the teachers are greedy, threaten the programs that serve our children and lay people off, then act totally surprised when you have the money to fill those positions a few months later and instead can't hire anyone and the kids have to have rotating long-term subs for months. You've asked us to think of our household budgets. Fine, I am. If my kids are hungry today, but I'm worried that two years down the line, I won't have the money for milk. I don't let them starve today. I give them what they need and try to solve the problems in the long run. That's what you should do too. Stop threatening the community. You're like an old time movie villain. Quote, "Give back the healthcare or the IB program gets it," unquote. You would take away Luther Burbank students' IB exam registration fees because maybe someday in the future, you'd have to take a loan if you can't sort out a couple million in savings over the next year or so. You'd compromise their futures and their college credits. Students who are largely first-generation college students eligible for free lunch. And for what? For a bargaining chip. Serve the students. Serve the community. Community. Stop playing games. The next comment is from Stacy Sayer and says, hello to the new board. I am writing to voice my strong opposition to the recommended reductions of certificated staff at school sites with specialty programs, including Kit Carson and Caleb Greenwood. Because these cuts would eliminate the IB coordinator position, these would mean the elimination of the IB programs at these schools. As you likely know, both campuses have had significant enrollment increases and improvements in test scores since becoming IB certified schools. These programs draw families to our district and keep families in our district and in response, they pay for themselves. I'm a strong proponent of public schools. My twins, now in eighth grade, have attended SCUSD schools since kindergarten. But without these programs, we will likely leave the district. My eighth graders plan to continue at Kit for high school. And if that is no longer an option, I'll be forced to do what many in my neighborhood have been doing for years. Request an inter-district transfer or send him to a private school. The communities of River Park and East Sacramento have had terrible high school choices for years. For example, the home high school for River Park is Rosemont, a 30-minute drive each direction. That's unacceptable. Now, thanks to the new programming at Kit, we finally have a great option for high school. We owe it to our children to preserve this program. I urge you to protect this growing, promising program. The next comment is from Kevin Borelli and says, I'm writing to voice my concern and strong opposition to the recommended cuts of the IB coordinator position for Caleb Greenwood and Kit Carson schools. And this can, is shorter, but it has a lot of the elements of the previous comment. Because these programs are so important to not only our students, but the families. Families have voiced the desire of specialty programs and programs that advance and challenge their children. IB does that. These programs keep people in our district. We have lost families to other districts' charters as they search for the right program and fit for their child. Help us to prevent more families from leaving. The IB program has revived Kit Carson. It has brought a high school into the community. I personally know families that consider different programs for their child, but stayed in our district because of IB and the option of a small high school. These schools had to work hard for their accreditation and have done an amazing job. Not many districts can boast of a K-12 IB program. Please rethink your decision to eliminate the IB coordinator position. The program in our district depend on it. And the next comment is from Amy Woodhull and says, as a parent and community member, I strongly urge the board to retain the IB programs and services. This program is an excellent opportunity for your children. And without the program, many, many families will move their children outside of the district. It's my hope the suggested removal of the IB coordinator was done without knowledge, the profound impact it would have on the program. I am confident the board will find other avenues to cut costs while maintaining necessary programs for our youth. Both of my boys are thriving in the IB program. With today's climate, the IB learning module has an even bigger impact on youth education with a whole world attitude. Please vote against the removal of this program. And the next comment is, says the same as a previous comment. And it's from Kristen Tudor. But it, it has the same, it's the same message. And the next comment is from Ingrid Foster and says, these proposed cuts to arts, the gate program, language programs, and specifically the IB program are absolutely horrifying. As a parent, a community member, former SAC Metro Arts Commission Board Member for Arts Education Fundraising, and frankly, as a local businessperson, we are sacrificing our children's education in all areas that are proven to help them excel in both math and language to fund bloated expenses for our district at every level. These type of short-sighted ideas will not only hurt our kids, but will quickly, in combination with COVID shutdowns, take families out of our district and into the private schools in our area that will provide a full education. Although students will only further drive the district into financial ruin, losing the very federal revenue it depends on to function. Why not think this problem out further and look to the models that provide both increasing revenue and an outstanding education for children, namely, the IB program? Cutting the funds for the IB coordinator position and eliminating the IB program from the district is so poorly considered. The Caleb Greenwood program has grown in academic performance and revenue through increased enrollment to be an outstanding model for the entire district to consider. Children are learning better. Wait lists are in place for every grade. Community home values are increasing, are increased. And it seems to this IB parent who openly enrolled to join this outstanding program to be the proverbial, quote, "win-win." Cutting deep into the IB, gate, and arts programs will only send more people out of the district and further plummet the education of SAC City kids. These items are always the low-hanging fruit in budget crisis and always the worst and most damaging places to take away funding. Please do not make this grave error and instead look to other methods of cost savings from staff reduction, potential pay cuts, benefit restructuring, et cetera. A full plan needs consideration here before knee-jerk cuts that have lasting effect, effects on our kids, our district, and our entire community are chosen. Thank you. And that's all the comments for just IB in general. And the next group is for Caleb Greenwood. And there are four. And the first is from Marco Calucci and says, my children are alumni of Caleb Greenwood and I cannot stress enough how important and beneficial this school is to the children and community. The teachers, staff, and all school families are all equally in full support of maintaining the quality and need of this school. I, as a parent and taxpayer, am in strong opposition of reducing or negatively altering the funding for this school or any schools right now. Make your budget cuts in other sectors, not education. It's your poor mismanagement of funds and bureaucratic policy that is having a disastrous effect on California. Do your job. The next comment is from Stacy Hayashi and says, my name is Stacy Hayashi and I'm a parent of two children at Caleb Greenwood Elementary School. I'm writing about the fiscal recovery plan on the agenda for January 26. As stated at the December 10 meeting, I am disappointed to see the continued projected cuts in the FRP, removing specialized and necessary programs at SCUSD schools. Programs like IB and Waldorf draw students in from across and outside the district. Specifically related to the IB program, Caleb Greenwood generates enough revenue in a single year to pay for their full program expenses and generate additional revenue for the district. We had hoped to continue our children's IB learning at Kit Carson. However, should the program be canceled, we would most likely look outside of SCUSD for middle and high school. The IB coordinator positions at these schools are vital and are required to maintain IB status. I understand the importance and need for fiscal responsibility. However, I'm concerned about the impact the FRP has on the district's most vulnerable students, poverty-impacted students in schools. There are ways to reduce the budget without the students having to bear, having to bear the brunt of the impact. Please look at negotiating the medical benefits package, which has been shown to be expensive, and the cost driver. Please be mindful of the critical support vulnerable students need to succeed and keep the programs drawing students to the district. Thank you. The next comment is from Crystal Richardson and says, as parents of two Caleb Greenwood Elementary students and residents of River Park, it has been brought to our attention that Caleb Greenwood Elementary is at risk of losing its status as an international baccalaureate school. Should the school board approve the fiscal recovery plan as it is and cut a single position in our school, required IB coordinator? Caleb Greenwood Elementary School provides an important, top-notch education curriculum to our students due in part to the IB program at the school. Research shows that students in the IB primary years program and middle years program perform better than non-IB students in Global International Schools Assessment Study that ran from 2009 to 2011. As a former school site council member, it has been heartwarming to watch our school's test scores improve and enrollment grow year over year. The IB program has driven growth in school enrollment from 401 students, 2013-14 to 559 students, 219-20. Enrollment growth has provided an annual revenue increase of nearly 1.2 million each year, more than paying for our IB coordinator position, $110,000 annually. I understand the tough position you are in and the dire situation the current Sacramento City Unified School District budget is in. However, I respectfully want you to know that community members and parents like me do not support the decision to cut staffing for specialty programs that require minimal additional staff for certification. It will have compounding negative impacts on the school's students and staff and the community as a whole. Many parents like us will have to decide whether or not to keep our kids in the school district and enrollment will plummet. I'm asking you to remove this portion of the FRP. Please allow Caleb Greenwood Elementary and other specialty programs to keep our IB coordinator and status as an IB school. And the next comment is from Josh Clark and says, I am a parent of a student at Caleb Greenwood Elementary and hope to enroll my second child in kindergarten at Caleb in the fall. I write to oppose the fiscal recovery plan and to call on the district to pursue negotiated savings to address its structural deficit. My children and their classmates would be negatively impacted by the FRP as it would eliminate the international baccalaureate IB coordinator position and with it, the IB program at Caleb Greenwood. It is no exaggeration to say that we chose to enroll our kids at Caleb Greenwood because of the IB program. I know from having spoken with other parents that we're not alone on this. I'd say that our decision to enroll at Caleb due to the IB program is closer to the rule than the exception. There is evidence in fact that it would be financially counterproductive to cut the IB program at Caleb Greenwood. The increased enrollment pattern at the school tells us that the IB program has not only paid for itself, but subsidizes other schools in the district. That is, Caleb Greenwood is a revenue-generating school for the district because of its IB program. The IB program at Caleb Greenwood is self-sustaining. Cutting it would be self-defeating. That's the narrow self-interest pitch, my self-interest pitch, and that of the district. On a broader level, I see the fiscal recovery plan as deeply inequitable and the wrong place to start. I understand there is a structural deficit in the district and that a state takeover would be worse than the FRP. But so-called non-negotiables cannot be all that is on the table. It may be negotiated savings that would not be enough to address the district's structural problems. But they are absolutely the right place to start from a mission SCUSD standpoint and from an equity and social justice standpoint. Services to students across the district, lightly above all, at schools where parents are working multiple jobs and do not have the time to write letters like this one, have already been stripped of nearly every non-essential. It is undoubtedly easier to cut non-negotiables, but it is worse for, for the future of the district and the city of Sacramento. The city needs a public conversation and debate out in the open and no matter how heated about how to fix the structural deficit. That will be created by forcing negotiation partners to the table and bringing to public light the full range of potential cost reductions. Whether those reside in changes to healthcare plans or to the pay grades for the district's highest administrators is a conversation that we need to be having in public view. And that's the final comment on that portion. And the next group is from Kit Carson and there are 10. And the first comment is from Slow Ann Richardson. And she says, I was, she wants to make comment, I'm an eighth, I'm an 11th grade student at Kit Carson in the IB program. And the current plan, our school, our school will potentially lose five teachers, which will put our IB program at risk. I have worked hard in this program since I started at Kit Carson in seventh grade. If we lose our program, I will have to put my hard work and not be able to reap the benefits. I will have nothing to show for the time and effort I have put in the last four and a half years. I urge the district to rethink its plan that will negatively affect the students and teachers within this district. I am honestly furious that I, that it even came to this position in the first place. The adults that control our district need to be much more worried. The adults that control our district need to be much more worried about the consequences of their actions. Their concern, concern should not only be shown when students speak up. If the district had a better relationship with the teachers' union, this would be in the hands of adults, but instead it is up to the teenagers that go to the schools in this district. I am disappointed in the leadership in charge of my education because my learning has become up for discussion when it shouldn't be. Children slash teenagers should not have to worry about how their education will be affected, not only on a day to day basis, but also in the big picture. Thank you for your time. And the next comment is from Vice President Murawski. Did you want me to put a two, two minute timing on these? Some of them are, are rather long.
I'll defer to President Pritchett's back. Yes. Two minute timing on each.
So this comment is from Mary Kelly and says, I am a parent of a ninth grade student at Kit Carson International Academy. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the recommended reductions of certificated staff at school sites with specialty programs, including Kit Carson. The recommended cuts would eliminate positions such as the IB coordinator, which would result in the elimination of the Kit Carson's IB program. Kit Carson has had significant enrollment increases and improvements in test scores since beginning the IB certified school. IB program draws families into our district and keeps families in our district and as such, the program pays for itself. The communities of River Park and East Sacramento have long had no reasonable high school choices. Most neighbors request an inter-district transfer or send their students to private school. However, with the IB program at Kit Carson, we finally have a great alternative for our neighborhood high school, as well as the opportunity to be a school that draws students from other districts, as does the IB program at Miraloma High School. The SUSD's website touts the IB program as having a quote, hard earned reputation for high standards of teaching and student achievement, end quote. It continues, quote, IB has a proven, proven track record of high academic success. IB is one of the fastest growing educational programs on the planet, end quote. Finally, quote, research shows that students who graduate from IB programs are better prepared for college and careers and have the highest GPAs in four-year university freshman classes, end quote. As the board is responsible for establishing the district's long-term vision, it is incumbent on the members to make decisions that support specialty programs. The then board was exercising its long-term vision when authorizing Caleb Greenwood and Kit Carson to pursue the IB World School authorization. At that time, the board recognized the benefits of SUSD offering the prestigious academic program across an entire K-12 education track. The next comment is from Heather Haight and says, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the recommended reductions of certificated staff at school sites with specialty programs, including Kit Carson International Academy. The recommended cuts would eliminate positions such as the IB coordinator, which would result in elimination of the Kit Carson and Caleb Greenwood's IB programs. Kit particularly has seen significant enrollment increases and improvement in test scores since becoming an IB certified school. This alone should be enough evidence in a district that says equity matters to keep the IB program. Kit has a diverse student body and the IB program meets the needs of students across racial, socioeconomic, and ability identities, among others. My son is in, my son is in seventh grade, and we'd planned for him to stay at Kit through college. Being part of a globally oriented program, one that instills dignity and worth in the broad population of all our students, is what brought us and would keep us at Kit and in the district if it continues hosting the IB program. Additional reasons to keep the IB program includes its draw for families into our district and keeping families in our district. Therefore, the program pays for itself. SUSD's website touts, and this is the same paragraph as the one I read before, except it includes, finally, quote, research shows that students who graduate from IB programs are better prepared for college and careers and have the highest GPAs in four-year university freshman classes, end quote. As the board is responsible for establishing a long-term vision for the district and setting district policies and goals, it is incumbent on the board members to make decisions that support specialty programs such as Kit Carson's IB program. It was in exercising this long-term vision for the district that the then, time was up for that comment. And the next comment is from Lori Merritt and says, my daughter started Kit Carson this year, and my son is in ninth grade. This is his third year there. We love Kit's IB program and appropriate how much the staff supports students. If Kit loses the funding necessary to support the IB program, the district would be gutting a successful program. Kit became an IB program as a result of a grassroots community intervention for a struggling middle school. The IB program has taken Kit Carson from a struggling middle school with declining enrollment to a school where more students apply than they have space for. I can remember attending a high school information meeting and parents from private schools and Waldorf schools were worried about their children getting a space. I was grateful I didn't have to worry about my child's space since he'd been going there for middle school. Now I am worried about where he will go to high school if Kit's IB program is ripped apart. The district stands to lose money as more high school families flee the district. It seems crazy and short sighted to me that the district would shut down a successful program that is attracting families to a school. The fiscal plan money won't change much in the district, but it would have devastating effects for Kit Carson. Please don't destroy a program that is doing great for students at Kit and keeping families in the district. And the next comment is from Mary Kelly and says, my name is Mary Kelly, and I am the parent of a ninth grade student at Kit Carson International Academy. I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the recommended reductions of certificated staff at school sites with specialty programs, including Kit Carson. The recommended cuts would, would eliminate positions such as the IB coordinator, which was, would result in the elimination of the Kit Carson's IB program. Kit Carson has had significant enrollment increases and, excuse me, but it looks like this comment repeats one that we had before. Except here at the end, it says, the schools undertook years-long processes of training teachers, raising curriculum to meet IB standards, as well as the construction process to convert the middle school into an IB high school. In 2016, Kit Carson became the first SUSD school to offer the IB for middle school years, thereby realizing that board's vision to offer the IB program for grades K through 12. I urge you to acknowledge the long-term vision that brought the IB programs to Kit Carson and Caleb Greenwood and to consider the hours effort and costs incurred by the district to be able to offer this prestigious program. I urge you to protect this growing program and by doing so, further what is set out in the 2016 to 21 strategic plan to, quote, focus on proven strategies that directly impact our students' ability to access high quality instruction and receive the appropriate supports to help them become college and career ready, end quote. I urge you to preserve the funding that will allow IB programs at Kit Carson and Caleb Greenwood to continue to grow and succeed. Elimination of these specialty programs will do more harm than good for a struggling district. It is not the time to make cuts that will eliminate these programs. Rather, it is the time to support the programs in achieving the mission of the strategic plan.
Ms. Moretti, is that 15 minutes on that one item?
I think Vice President Murawski, were you blocking the section?
I did have 15 minutes, but I, I'm not.
On this one, yeah. Well, let me see how many I have left.
How many do you have left?
I have five left, so I would say I've been reading for 10 minutes.
Okay, then we will allocate five more minutes.
Okay. So the next comment says, is from Michael Richardson and says, it is absolutely absurd to consider reducing staff at Kit Carson, especially given the possibility of losing IB status. We were very specifically sold on Kit Carson as an IB school and the benefits of such an education. My daughter is currently in the 11th grade, and we fully expect her to be able to get an IB diploma. We were told that such a diploma would likely make it easier to get accepted at colleges, and that in some cases, my child would be given college credit, thus saving potentially thousands of dollars. To strip that away at this point because, because this district has been unable to get its affairs in order financially is patently unfair. At a minimum, I fully expect the district to maintain the program so that every current student at Kit Carson will receive an IB diploma. And the next comment is from Brittany Barham Guerrero and says, cutting successful student programs to meet budget needs is wrong. We must invest in our youth, not cut programs like the IB program at Kit Carson. It is successful and highly sought after, especially given what students are currently dealing with. This would be a slap in the face. And the next comment is from, I don't have a name. It says, hello, I'm a parent of a newcomer ninth grader to KCIA. I don't understand why you would like to cutting staff and the IB program to this school. It would be devastating to all the students that want to attend a very small high school after what they have gone through during this pandemic. KCIA has been a motivation school to my daughter. She's a good student with good grades due to KCIA and the motivation, why staying? And the motivation to stay? Where this school is not just a school, is family to all our kids who attend. You would be making a big mistake if you decide wrong. We are here for our kids. They are our future, and I feel our generation is turning our back on them. Please reconsider your thoughts and think about our kids, our future. That is why education is first. And the next comment is from Elizabeth Campbell and says, I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the recommended reductions of certificated staff at school sites with specialty programs, including Kit Carson. Because these cuts would eliminate the IB coordinator position at Kit Carson, this reduction would mean the elimination of the IB programs at the school and likely result in a total elimination of the high school program. The IB high school program has resulted in a significant enrollment increase and improvements in test scores since KCIA became IB certified. The program draws and keeps families in our district and thus effectively pays for itself. If the IB program at KCIA is eliminated, we will almost certainly remove our eighth grader from the district. We have already removed our fourth grader due to SUSD's inability to meet his needs as a struggling reader. This district has long suffered from an inability to get beyond casting blame and move forward with vision and common sense. Please do the right thing, preserve these programs that serve mostly low income students, and avoid short sighted budget cuts that will result in long-term losses for students and the district as a whole. And the final comment is, oh, excuse me, this is one that was already read, so it must be a duplicate. So that's the final comment on that Kit Carson section. And there are 10 comments on LDB. And the first is from Jennifer Wallace and says, I am a parent of students at LDB. My request is that the planned cuts are reevaluated. While I understand that painful cuts need to be made, LDB's middle school program should not be on the chopping block. Eliminating this amount of FTE would require the program to completely close, yet these students would still require the same number of teachers at other schools. It will not actually save any money for the district. The middle school at LDB pays for itself with incredibly low absentee rates compared to other schools. It is also so incredibly detrimental to our children to make them change schools just after coming out of this terrible pandemic. This is a program where teachers are going above and beyond and teaching electives that they aren't even required to teach. Elimination of the program will simply not save money and will cause extreme harm. I urge you to work with your fellow trustees to come alongside the district to find better ways to save money. This moment in time requires us to be creative and lead in ways that feel new and different. I urge you to use your leadership for good and to make sure that the students of SUSD are better protected from the financial crisis that faces us. And the next comment is from Devon Davis, the principal at LDB, and says, greetings and thank you for your commitment to serving the children in Sacramento City Unified School District. The district fiscal recovery plan includes a vote to go before the school board. That includes closing our established and successful middle school program. I have the pressure, opportunity, and necessity to introduce myself to you and highlight this exceptional school. I urge you to support this wonderful school and not close to, and not vote to close our successful middle school program or close our thriving band program. Leonardo da Vinci School, K through eight grade school was created by a dedicated group of parents and staff members who presented a dream to the SUSD School Board in 1988. The core tenets of the new school charter included open enrollment K eighth grade school site, integrated thematic instruction, access for special education students, now referred to inclusive practices, and emphasis on arts and sciences. This SUSD School Board approved the K eight program presented, and the school was recognized as a federally funded arts and sciences magnet school. This was before, quote, charter was a designation. Thirty-one years later, LDB continues as an E K through eight school. While we have no magnet funding, we continue to have ATT curriculum and emphasis on arts and sciences, inclusive inspired practices for students with special needs, parent leadership and parent volunteers, and a campus that has a waiting list at every grade level. We have a diverse student population. Thirty-seven percent of our students qualify to receive free and reduced lunch, and we continue to receive high academic accolades, CAASPP scores that exceed district and state averages. Leonardo da Vinci School has received the following awards. 2008 California Distinguished School, 2017 State Civic Award Honorable Mention, and 2019 celebrating three years, 2016 to 2019 of student academic growth. The next comment is from Catherine Sanders and says, my name is Catherine Sanders, and I am a parent of two seventh grade boys at Leonardo da Vinci E K through eight school. My son started at LDB in fourth grade after spending their K through three years in Montessori schools. I chose LDB knowing my sons would be able to move from elementary school with many of their classmates into a small middle school. I believe a smaller middle school is the best environment for my sons because they are more comfortable and confident with small peer groups and because there is more opportunity to develop strong bonds with their teachers. If you remove 1.6 FTE from the middle school, my sons will not be able to finish eighth grade at LDB. The whole MS is run on four main academic teachers, an art teacher and a PE teacher. If you remove 1.6 FTE, Leonardo da Vinci Middle School would not survive. LDB is an amazing program with strong parental support. Our parent group raises over $100,000 a year to pay for our specialized field trips that supplement lessons in several subject areas and other programs. We raise enough money so that every child gets to go on the trips. Last year, my son took part in a week-long trip to Yosemite with their sixth grade class. LDB not only provides an academically rich program, it also enrich students' lives in the arts. Both of my sons participated in morning music classes, one in band and the other in orchestra. Please reconsider removing 1.6 FTE from the middle school and think about the long-term consequences of eliminating a successful 31-year-old program. Thank you. And the next comment is from Sarah Soto-Taylor and says, this letter is to express my deep concern with SUSD fiscal recovery plan, which includes deducting 1.6 teachers from the middle school program at Leonardo da Vinci School. Reducing 1.6 teaching positions would eliminate our middle school program. Both my daughters attend Leonardo da Vinci K eight school. My oldest daughter excelled in the integrated thematic instruction model and will be graduating this year well-prepared for her high school of choice. My youngest daughter is in sixth grade, and we look forward to her continuing her middle school education at Leonardo da Vinci. Leonardo da Vinci School is exceptional in many ways. Principal Davis has shown great commitment to fiscal responsibility and student inclusiveness that has led to highly engaged parent participation throughout the entire school campus. Leonardo da Vinci is a model that should be elevated and replicated, not dismantled as the current fiscal recovery plan describes. From kindergarten through eighth grade, parents at kindergarten, parents at Leonardo da Vinci routinely invest at least 40 hours each school year to classroom assistance, driving on field trips, and other volunteer activities. I personally look back at the time I spent with my daughters at their school, with their peers, other parents, and teachers as some of the most rewarding times of my life. My daughters are competent students and have achieved academic success as a result of the foundation the primary and middle school have provided. Middle school Leonardo da Vinci should not be eliminated. A more comprehensive review. A more comprehensive review of the school would reveal that seventh and eighth grade students thrive in the small school setting. At high rates, parents choose to continue their child's middle school education at Leonardo da Vinci. In fact, there's a waiting list for entrance into the middle school. It does not make fiscal or programmatic sense to eliminate this exceptional program. It is my sincere hope that the board will take into consideration the value Leonardo da Vinci Middle School serves and does not consider any rejections to the program. And the next comment is from Dable Tool and says, I am submitting comment related to the proposal to cut one point six positions from LDB's middle school. Without question, because of the size of LDB's middle school, that reduction will put an end to LDB as a K eight. Eliminating K eights is counter to recommended middle school education programming throughout the US and would have serious repercussions for middle school enrollment and children forced to attend large middle schools. I urge you to remove this proposal immediately and adopt targeted cuts with full involvement and input from the Sacramento community. Thank you. And the next comment is from Rebecca Scoville and says, I understand that the budget deficit is a real and grave problem at that and that these next layer of cuts are going to be painful as the budget is already bare bones. But I strongly believe that cutting one point six teachers from the LDB middle school program is the wrong decision. This cut of one point six teachers will eliminate the middle school program, which is one of the highest scoring middle schools in the district. I have a first and third grader at LDB this year and through the pains and struggles of distance learning, it is the teachers, Mrs. Goodman and Mrs. Mao that are making learning at home possible and actually fun for my boys. My first grader learned how to read this year in distance learning. What a huge accomplishment is that. I share this story of learning as I know that the high quality of education that my children are getting now will continue through their middle school education at LDB. We chose LDB three years ago because of the rigorous academics, the fun field trips, parent participation and thematic learning. The knowledge that my kids could reap the rewards of this well established educational experience, not only through elementary school, but through middle school as well sold us on the program. We were excited to get accepted into the program and honestly, our LDB experience has been even more magical and rewarding than we expected. We have been blown away by each teacher we have had, the engaged and hardworking administration and the parents eager and willing involvement. My teacher, my children have thrived at LDB and the LDB middle school experience is a safe place for my children to continue their rigorous education. My husband and I were shocked to hear that this budget cut was even on the table. I know there are other areas like employee health costs that can be cut. But the education of our middle schoolers is not an area that should ever be cut. Please reconsider and save our middle school program for the future of my children and the many generations of LDB students to come after them. And the next comment is from Dan Goulart and says, we, we have been fortunate enough to be members of the Leonardo da Vinci family for six years. As parents, it is a painstakingly difficult challenge to find an educational experience for your family that fits all of your many requirements. Solid education, safe environment, engaged families and teachers, access to music and arts and a student body that is driven by desire to learn and a desire to grow socially. We have found this at LDB. I am sure you have heard how LDB has been a standard for over thirty years. I am sure you have been presented with the fact that LDB has a waiting list at every grade level, E K through eight. I imagine you have been told that LDB is fiscally sound. And by cutting the middle school programs, Sac City will not benefit in any way financially and will likely only succeed in taking away one of their solvent programs and forcing kids and teachers to crowd into programs that are not as fiscally sound or capable of maintaining their enrollment. You may even realize that by taking away one point six teachers from middle school that needs every single one to function as the high quality rigorous education experience that prepares our kids for high school in a manner that is unparalleled in this area. You will effectively force the middle school to close and therefore force parents to choose between sending their kids to large schools where they may get swallowed up in an environment that is not suited for every child or to, or to go with a private option in a time where our economy and people's jobs are already stressed. Or to move outright to a school district that can accommodate a similar experience to LDB. I am guessing that you do not want people leaving. That is already a concern for Sac City and making across the board decisions like cutting the LDB middle school and valued programs like music, which both our kids have enjoyed and benefited from for years will not save you from your real problems. And the next comment is from Ryan Johnson and says, the fiscal recovery plan proposes cutting one point six teachers at Leonardo da Vinci Middle School. My daughters have both had an exceptional experience at LDB. Unfortunately, cutting these one point six teachers would result in the middle school having to close completely, losing a major part of the effectiveness of the K eight program at LDB. I know that cuts overall have to be made, but I want to bring to your attention that in this case, these cuts to LDB will have an oversized negative impact to a program that has been excellent and fiscally sound for many, many years. Please consider this in reviewing the proposal. Thank you. And the next comment is from Chris Thoma. And says, my name is Chris Thoma and I'm a parent at Leonardo, Leonardo da Vinci. I am writing to express my concerns with reducing the middle school teaching staff. Please reconsider and not make these cuts. In looking at the impact statements, there are far too many programs slash rules that may be eliminated at the detriment to students of S U S D. I understand that we are in a dire situation financially and I do not believe that these cuts are the right ones to be making. I strongly oppose the elimination of the middle school at LDB. The middle school faculty are caring, talented and committed individuals. They are teachers that go beyond what's required of their contract to provide electives, after school programs and amazing field trips. It also doesn't make sense for you to cut the middle school because should our middle schoolers be displaced to another school, S U S D will still need to provide that same number of teachers resulting in no cost savings. All it would do is close down a program that is recognized and desired by parents district wide for their children. My older child has already gone through LDB middle school and is prepared beyond my expectations for high school, even in the midst of distance learning. I'd also like to bring to your attention that one, the middle school at LDB pays for itself and then some. According to ADA data, from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, LDB had the lowest rate of chronic absenteeism compared with other S U S D middle schools. For example, in twenty eighteen nineteen, LDB's chronic absenteeism rate was four point five percent. While rates at two nearby middle schools were seventeen point one five percent at Cal and sixteen point one percent at Sam Brannon. It does not make sense to eliminate a program that is financially sound. Two, there is an abundance of data that suggests that smaller middle schools are better for students than larger middle school environments. Three, LDB could be a proof point for our district and it could support broader learning that would be better for our district overall.
And that, that concludes the fifteen minutes for that section. Is that the last section that you had, correct?
I have, no, I have.
You have three on budget?
And three on various extracurricular, extracurricular programs.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to remind the community that all public comments can be seen on the S U S D website as well. And board members all have received your public comment via email.
So the next grouping is various extracurricular programs. And the first is from Angela Ash and says, no cuts to VAPA slash arts programs. These cuts do more harm than good, both financially and to the social and emotional health of our children. Arts programs are desperately needed, especially now during this tumultuous time. The next comment is from Adriana Alkaila Beshara and says, the consideration of elimination of programs such as Gate, AP and Pathways here and after quote, opportunity programs unquote within the school district should not even be a consideration. In addition, the elimination of one point six positions at Leonardo da Vinci closes the middle school program based on bargained student teacher staffing ratios and is morally and fiscally irresponsible. Pennywise and dollar foolish. Many studies support greater emotional and academic success and ROI in K eight schools. It's why many metropolitan school systems have adopted this model. Also, consider as notice, a decision tonight regarding LDB also appears to run afoul of state law requirements. Moving on, there are schools within this district wherein your address dictates whether your child goes to a quote, good school unquote or not. Opportunity programs in schools like LDB give our children, especially those of color, a chance at a better education irrespective of socioeconomic status, meaning whether you can live in projects or million dollar homes of pocket, et cetera, you are welcome. This is equity. Elimination of items aforementioned disenfranchise our children of opportunities that school districts such as Folsom and El Dorado Hills provide. Children receive different educations based on what opportunities are available. Don't take what little opportunities that these children have left. Stripping these opportunities is sophistry to your real budget issues. Children's futures prospects should not be dictated by political clout and the affluence of their parents. As state workers, my household took almost a ten percent reduction of our earnings due to our state's budget. I was not excited about it, but I understood our unions and state negotiators knew what needed to be done and had everyone's best interest in mind. And the next comment is from Patrick Neff. Then says, I am reaching out as the former music director at Rosemont High School and the president-elect of California Music Educators Association capital section. I am deeply saddened that the board is once again considering cuts to music education in the district. S U S D was once a flagship district for music in the state. But previous cuts, which my predecessor at Rosemont would describe as the quote draconian cuts of nineteen ninety two unquote, have already hindered the district's ability to provide comprehensive music education that students deserve. The district should instead, instead be creating opportunities for music programs at the elementary level. And cuts to any current music offerings reflect leadership that does not value arts education. My peers who have reached out to you have received responses concerning healthcare costs for district employees. As a former employee of the district, I know this has always been a contentious topic. But it seems that at best, the S U S D music programs are being used as pawns in an effort to exert pressure elsewhere and at worst are a very minor cost saving measure that will have negative consequences for generations of students. Music education in S U S D is a bright spot that shines despite obstacles that have been present for decades. I am incredibly proud of the program I built at Rosemont, but moved on in part because I feared encountering this issue again. It is exhausting and unfair for everyone involved. Please eliminate all potential cuts to your, to music from the fiscal recovery plan and never consider this again. Thank you. And the last three comments are on the budget cuts in general. And the first is from Nancy Fitzpatrick. And says, I am writing to express my concern that the current fiscal recovery plan strips our schools in our district of some of the unique programs that make our schools successful. My family and I appreciate the work our teachers, staff, administrators and leaders do every day to bring a strong and vibrant education to our students. We have been, however, concerned with the budget management of the district and the strain that is put on all parties. Unfortunately, the students have paid the price for a legacy of budget and bargaining dysfunction. The latest fiscal recovery plan is not an acceptable solution to the district's budget woes. Obviously, some cuts will have to be made. However, we consider it unacceptable to make cuts only in the non-negotiable category. We expect that all of the represented staff will make a sacrifice. And we also expect the district administration to reduce salary increases in staff. To make cuts based on, on an FTE formula that would effectively cut programs by cutting staff. Take Caleb Greenwood's IB program, for example, negates the hard work school side councils, parents and staff have invested over years to bring families back to S U S D schools and keep them there. These kind of cuts hurts, hurt students now and in the future. And the next comment is from Cindy Brosimer and says, I am requesting that any action that would have a direct impact on students be used only as an absolute last resort. All other options should be thoroughly examined and exhausted before implementing cuts that negatively affect district students. Closing programs and forcing students to leave schools they already attend and are comfortable with will only drive more families to leave the district entirely. Our kids need stability and familiarity more than ever. Many have lost so much already. Don't take more. And the final public comment is from Catherine Warmerdum and says, thank you for holding a special meeting focused on the fiscal recovery plan. A public discussion detailing how the district will fix its structural deficit and avoiding receivership is long overdue. The fiscal recovery document is a first step in that discussion. However, it falls far short of serving as a roadmap towards solvency. The formula driven cuts proposed in this document seem to have been made without any consideration of real life context or consequences. The proposal up for discussion tonight is a list of cuts, but it is not a plan. An actual plan looks at the big picture. An actual plan weighs the impacts on student outcomes. An actual plan treats schools and programs as part of an integrated system, not silos. Where are the creative ideas for integrating or consolidating programs? Where is the analysis on the impacts that shuttering middle school programs at K eight sites will have on enrollment and student outcomes? Where is the evidence that disrupting special education programs actually saves money? The document for you offers none of that. Superintendent Aguilar and board members, I challenge you to answer this question for families tonight. When will the public see a comprehensive integrated plan that looks holistically at the budget cuts that will be necessary to avoid receivership? We are running out of time to implement the best available solutions, the solutions that will do the least harm to students. The longer we wait, the fewer creative options we have available to us. We are growing impatient for your leadership. Show us a real plan. Thank you. And that's the final public comment on this item.
Thank you, Anne. Now take a deep breath and grab a glass of water. I know that was a lot for you. So thank you. Um, okay, without, I'll open it up. You know, I just, I want to say real quick, I, you know, as I was listening to all the public comments and the presentation from Ms. Ramos. It reminded me of eight years ago, um, being a new board member, um, on my second meeting and facing school closures. And I started thinking a little bit about that. Um, and I, it reminded me that, you know, kids and students and families that were in kindergarten through fifth grade back eight years ago are now facing us cutting again and are still within our district. You know, we've heard from Ms. Ramos, you know, about the drop in enrollment. And I foresee that, you know, families that can will make decisions if they want to keep their kids within our district and it could potentially get a lot worse. It's, it's disappointing that we are looking at items of that. And the only thing that really that doesn't have to be negotiated is the direct impact to students. Um, and, uh, you know, so sorry, I thought I had my phone off here. Uh, and I, you know, receivership should not be an option at all. It will be a disaster for our district. And, um, I, I'm hoping that, you know, as our board discusses, uh, we, we take that into consideration. Receivership means that people that are not invested in their communities like we are will be making decisions on what cuts that we need to make. So with that, I'll open it up to a board discussion. Member Maraski.
Thank you, President Pritchett, and wanted to first thank Rose for another very clear, very comprehensive presentation on our fiscal woes. Um, but our, you know, we have to embrace reality as we talked about. Our reality is looking a little brighter than it was. Um, and that's mostly, you know, through no fault or effort of our own, really due to the COLA as part of the governor's budget, particularly for next year. You know, erases a massive chunk of our deficit. So that's just, you know, that's just part of the challenge that of the roller coaster of kind of revenues and expenses that we are all on the subject to. But given that we have, you know, that we're in a bit of a better place based on this latest information, given we have some reserves. We have the opportunity to, I think, approach these cuts in a strategic way. Um, and so I, I wanted to share, I, I took, I mean, I've gone over and over all of these cuts and, and the different options. And I know it's a lot to look at and try to categorize and I appreciate the stuff, um, you know, giving us kind of different categories or ways to think about, um, how, how to approach these cuts. So I'm gonna just pitch out there to my colleagues to, um, you know, kind of my framing of how I So I'm going to just pitch out there to my colleagues to, you know, kind of my framing of how I was able to process these. And hopefully that will be a springboard for discussing. So I have kind of like a five, five points of how I thought we might approach this. So the first is to keep focused on negotiated solutions for sure. The second is to just to take some cuts off of the table entirely. And I'll go through and give you a little more detail of each of these. Some of these cuts need more time and strategic thinking about how to approach them. And I think that was well put by the staff on slide. I don't remember what slide it is, but there was one slide that indicated, you know, some of these need more time to analyze. The third is to that we should, you know, embrace our reality and we still do have a deficit and move forward with the general fund cuts that we can. While at the same time maintaining direct services and programs that serve students with the federal cares funds to the extent we can. And that's, you know, like the last slide with social workers, counselors, and after-school indicated that we could maintain some of those things with with federal funds. And then the last would be to bring back to the board information about what's been done so far to really maximize the efficiency and the efficacy of the district office. I think that, you know, some of our partners have raised a lot of, you know, ideas about about things that could be changed, streamlined. You know, I think it's good to have that conversation as well. It's not part of this plan as in its current form. But if we could just have kind of an analysis of, and I know a lot of work has been done on that. So, so those are kind of my, those are kind of my point. So the negotiated solutions, I think, is, you know, something we've talked a lot about. You know, it's, it is a difficult thing to ask for, but I think we need to keep in mind a reduction to benefits costs that will get us in line with other districts comparable. These are some of the only cuts that don't directly affect the children we serve. So I think, you know, if we're putting kids first, I think we all need to be serious about the, you know, what are the impacts? And especially, you know, the kind of the just large dollar amounts that are associated with those. The second was take, take some cuts off the table. And the cuts that I would suggest taking off the table entirely are the cuts that staff didn't recommend. And that would be the list of B, and I will find the slide for you. You can bear with me. On slide 24, this would be VAPA, CTE, Safe Schools, Gate, New Teacher Induction, Improvement Accountability and School Support, After-School Use Development. Thank you. So those are, those are programs that staff last time did not recommend we move forward with. So I'm, if those are not even staff recommendations, I think we, you know, should take those off the table for now. The second one is, I'm sorry. The second one is take off the table disruptive cuts that are going to close schools or programs without really resulting in a fiscal savings. And I think there's a, there's at least a few on that list that will likely not save money. There are sort of small dollar amounts, but large potential enrollment impacts. And I'm thinking of maybe the IB school, the Waldorf schools, LDB middle school, like these, these are, you know, and we could have some more analysis of that of the enrollment impacts. But I think some of them just should be taken off the table based on the fact that they will likely not even yield the fiscal results that we're looking for. So the third is just the kind of the categories of things that need more analysis. And I would ask for, you know, we, like the last commenter said, I think we need a plan. We need a strategic analysis of kind of what are we maintaining? What do we want to grow? We need to engage the community in, you know, the school communities and just the broader community. And what do we want out of our schools, you know, particularly looking at? There's a few different items in here. So the small high schools. You know, we're maintaining five high schools with under 300 students each, all specialty kind of programs. So, you know, is that the best way to go? Can we consolidate? Do we, you know, are we maintaining the right CTE pathways for our region? Are we serving the needs? Like, I think we need to be asking those questions. The same thing with kind of the proposed elimination of middle schools. Or certain middle schools, kind of what strategic plan is that kind of being proposed pursuant to? I would, I would say the same thing about the preschool. We need kind of a strategic plan, like for early learning, to have some rhyme and reason to what we're actually offering. There's a lot going on at the state and federal level on this, on this item. So, and then the last one is the high-cost inclusive practices model. There's a lot of attention being paid to special ed and there's a lot, you know, and that is, that is a model program. So I think, you know, that should either be taken off the table or analyzed for what other alternatives are available to maintain inclusion. The last, or the moving forward with the cuts we can was the fourth point I had. And that's really mostly on, I think, slide 29. And that's mostly things that are not subject to layoff notices. This would be like the centralized supplies, professional development, although that one hurts. And I would hope that we, that we could either fund that if we needed to or, or restore it when we have, when we have the funds. Travel, eliminating paying for IB and AP tests, elementary sports, college and career visits, discretionary supplies. So I would say, you know, we should move forward with these. Except we should try to backfill with federal dollars for, you know, the elementary sports or college and career visits for things that are directly serving students. And that would be, that would be true too for some of the other ones mentioned, social workers. And I would add, we need to redesign that program so we can better claim medical funding to sustain those positions long-term. And that is something that I know is, is being worked on. But maintaining the counselors after school and social workers with the federal funds, I think, is a great idea. We should have, you know, what, what, what more we, what more we can with, with one-time federal funds. And finally, just the, the, learning more about what we've done with the central office positions and whether there's more opportunities there. So that's, that's kind of my, that was my take on the kind of trying to put together some kind of framework. Negotiate solutions, take some off the table. Some of them need more analysis, move forward with what we can while maintaining, using federal funds and then looking at central office. And I think I am in charge here for a moment as President Pritchett seems to have lost power, so I will take further comments. Member, I'm sorry.
Member Murawski, can I just interject? I'm not sure if it was on our end or on your end. You were speaking about the category of those that need more analysis. And you mentioned small high schools, middle schools, and then I lost you. And you came back when you said inclusive practices. So.
Oh, preschool.
Okay.
And I can also make, make some notes. And I mean, depending on where this conversation goes, I can certainly send, send you my thoughts afterwards as well.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will take comments. Member Rose, please.
Member Murawski, Vice President Murawski. I think what you said, you made some great points. And I commend your analysis of what we are looking at. One of the things that on page 29, when we look at proposed fiscal cuts is paying for the IB testing. In the IB program, there's schools who have IB testing that if they weren't able to get that support, their IB program will go away. Right? And so if we're talking about preserving IB programs in general, we should also be talking about preserving those testing, that testing revenue fund for that. Other than that, I, I liked your analysis. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia.
Thank you. I, I, I'm glad you went first. I think you pretty much cleared sort of my, my little working document here on how you framed and prioritized categories. I think I'm aligned with some of these recommendations just need to be taken off the table because it completely eliminates programs. Being those being the IB programs as well as, you know, inclusive practices. I think, I think there, there are some, you know, areas, I think you outlined pretty well, that require additional analysis. I do want to make sure that we have a timeline with that analysis is coming back to the board. So I, I didn't hear that part because there are ways of, of, of serving our students, but just not in the same, same delivery model. So I, I think we need to think about these things a little bit more broadly because I do think there are some opportunities that we may be able to take advantage of, right? Things may look differently, but the programs will still be in place to some extent. I do think that, you know, to the extent that additional recommendations or elements, you're calling them in this document, are identified that can be paid for with, you know, additional care dollars, maybe, you know, recognizing that they're one-time dollars. I mean, this is a temporary sort of savings, one-time savings. We still don't necessarily address the, the structural deficit. We just kind of give us, give ourselves more time to figure things out, but I think it's, it's appropriate in some instances. So maybe come back with, with additional items or elements that can be paid for through COVID dollars. I know that districts have not yet received those dollars from, you know, that, that were approved, you know, in late December through, you know, our federal government. So, so we don't know yet what the district will get and what restrictions those dollars have. So I understand why maybe that list on slide 33 was, is still not exhaustive. One of the things that I did want to ask is professional development. I know a lot of it, it's a priority under, under CARES dollars to make sure that there is professional development available for, for teachers, especially in, you know, all our educators. Especially as we're teaching in distance learning or even a hybrid environment, right? I mean, we're not going from distance learning to full in-person. So there, there is that transition. So trying to figure out if we are removing the, you know, you know, embarrassingly, the $108,000 in professional development that is currently identified in, in slide 29. How might we be able to increase those dollars? Actually, that's just the savings. It's not the total, the total funding, right, for professional development? Is that the entire amount that the district spends on professional development? No. Okay. So maybe, it may be increase that, that funding through using some of those other federal dollars. I also wanted to talk about, I think, Board Member Murawski made the distinction between removing some recommendations completely, especially those that eliminate programs. But also coming back with, with other elements that need further study. And are we thinking about that information coming back to the board to be considered for this next fiscal year in 2021, 22? Or are we talking about the year after that, 22, 23? Okay.
Yes, yes, Member Garcia, and I'll of course defer to Rose. But we're talking about a fiscal recovery plan that impacts the 21, 22 fiscal year. And those elements that are not acted on would eventually, would essentially then continue on for the 21, 22 academic year. Those that the board deems as needing additional analysis or agreeing that it would require additional analysis. In my time here, we have not gone through any redesign, but I understand from staff that have been here for a number of years that that's what happened at New Tech, it's what happened at Caleb Greenwood, it's what happened at Kit Carson. Sometimes redesigns have worked better than other times. But certainly that we would come back and those changes, just given the way that the academic year works, would, 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 would take effect in the 22, 23 fiscal year. Because we would, would basically build a budget for the 21, 22 academic year based on the decisions you make currently.
Okay, so it's impacts further down the road. So I also wanted to talk about preschool. This is an area that I have a great interest in. I think we do have an opportunity to move the district. This, this would be part of a larger plan for Universal TK, so Transitional Kindergarten. So to the extent that we may be able to, for example, shift some of those four-year-olds currently being served in preschool to a transitional kindergarten model that the state is moving this direction, I think there's alignment between the governor's proposal as well as the legislative priorities. So there is going to be an opportunity of having that conversation in a more realistic way. So what does that mean? For example, if we are able to offer TK for all four-year-olds and, and then drawing down some of the state revenue for, for serving, for, for serving those four-year-olds. What does that mean to the preschool budget, right, in terms of savings or being able to serve more three-year-olds? So just trying to think through, like, just the bigger picture on, on how do we, how do we provide those early opportunities for our kids? We all know what the research shows in terms of, you know, early education, you know, and, and also preschool and TK, what academic benefits they have for, for all our students, especially our students with the highest needs. So I do want to come back and ask one question. I may come back later depending on, on time. I'm still trying to figure out what is our target number? And, and, and I realize that we're talking about a fiscal recovery plan that primarily focuses on non-negotiated solutions. But I think it's important that we talk about how this is just one piece of a larger puzzle, right? Because we're then talking about negotiated solutions, right? Can we have, can we, can we have a date certain that we're going to have a negotiated solution by June? When we, when we have to adopt a final budget or when we have to come back in July to make revisions to our June budget based on, based on state, you know, action, based on maybe additional federal, you know, revenue coming in under the new administration. So I'm trying to figure out what is our, our targeted number? And then how do we back ourselves into that number based on all these other factors? State budget, federal revenue, federal revenue, state revenue, negotiated solutions by a date certain, and then we figure out what's left. Because, you know, I, I'm sure none of us want to make these cuts, right? They're all going to impact our students directly. So I think we need to figure out how do we prioritize getting at whatever our target number is? And then even within that, prioritize it according to Board Member Murawski sort of, you know, outline. Does that make sense? Because it's been challenging processing all of this information. And I have to commend staff for, for really preparing the PowerPoint in a much more digestible way. It still took me quite a bit of time just to try and process the slides, you know, what, how things are interrelated, keeping in mind that we do have an obligation to meet some, you know, deadlines coming up, March fifteenth, the sixty-day notice. So, really knowing that there's, we have to vote on something in order to make, to meet those deadlines, to give ourselves the breathing space to then come back and, and make changes to whatever we triggered because of the March fifteenth and the sixty-day notice. So, that, that is what happens in other districts, right? When you have to make these, these cuts, you have to identify them, you have to act on it. And then depending on what happens with the state budget, with the federal budget, with other additional revenue, negotiated solutions, and you come back and you revise that plan and you, and you start restoring or, or rescinding some of those, some of those cuts. A timeline would be helpful, Superintendent. I'm thinking of next steps. So, next steps is for the board to take action on something. And again, to, to meet those deadlines that we have to meet per state law. Also, an implementation plan based on whatever is approved. So, how soon does an implementation plan come back to the board? And then how, how many times do we get to see that implementation plan as it unfolds, right? Based on all these other variables? And then also, I'd like to see a list or how we're going to prioritize removing or restoring some of those cuts that will be identified for next week. So, so how do we start removing, you know, some of those elements or recommendations or actions from that list? So, I'm just, just trying to, you know, come full circle because it is, it is a process. It, it's part of the budget process, what we're doing. The, the stakes are higher for us. So, so these, these actions do need to happen. I don't know to what extent. But I think for our community to understand that even though they're for, to a greater extent than we want, it, these, these, we have to do this in order to give us the, the time to, to, in a more thoughtful way. And depending on what happens with the state and the federal revenues, then we can come back and, and make, adjust those, those cuts in a way that, that keeps programs intact. So, so, but, but still having those bigger conversations on, on, you know, a bigger picture, more comprehensive strategic plan and, and whatnot. So, so, so anyway, I, I skipped around quite a bit because I didn't want to repeat some of the, the comments that have been made earlier. But I, if you need further clarification, I can certainly share my notes. Thank you.
That would be great, Garcia. And I don't know, President Pritchett, how you want to handle it, but just because it's difficult to, in, in this space to, to communicate with our staff, I do want to make sure that Consey McCarron, our Chief of HR, is prepared, whether you want to do it now or toward the end. I do think that because Member Garcia has raised the issue that our board members are reminded, even just now, of, of, of what that timeline might look like based on the March fifteenth deadline. What, how, how do you go about rescinding and making rescissions to those layoff notices? The board will have to vote on a resolution to provide layoff notices. Member Garcia mentioned, you know, possibilities of funding at the state level, at the federal level. Of course, what we would be looking for most closely is ongoing funding from those two entities as opposed to one-time funding. But also as we explore potential flexibility in the use of CARESAC dollars, again, that might trigger rescissions of layoff notices. So, I would like to make sure that before we close this discussion that Ms. McCarron give the board, those of you who have been here, just a reminder of that timeline and process. And for our new board members, what that looks like. We can always follow up with a B C, of course. But for our community also, who may have not participated in these discussions, just to give a sense of this, because as you said, Member Garcia, in many districts, this is, this is a, a practice, if you will, when, 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 when districts may be facing the kinds of challenges that we do here in Sac City, and we're still waiting to see what the budget development process, how it ends, that we may have to come back and, and make, reverse some of those decisions as, as we might identify additional funding sources. So, President Pritchett, I'll re- defer to you if you'd like Consey to give an explanation now or if we want to come back after more questions and comments from board members.
Yeah, I think it would be best if, if she came on at the end because there may be additional questions that need to be answered. And I have to apologize, I, I lost power at my house, and I don't know if you were able to tell, but I was literally by candlelight trying to take this call via my phone. So, now my power is back on. I'm trying to log back in. So, I cannot see other board members on my phone. So, if you can, Vice President Murawski and Superintendent, if you can kind of help me out a little bit, that would be fantastic until I can get my computer back up and going. Okay, so were there any other board member comments or questions? And, and once again, if you raise your hand, we'll, we'll get you called.
Recognize Member Villa.
I want to thank Board Member Murawski and Garcia for starting that conversation because a lot of the things that they have said are the things that I agree with. I do want to go to another topic similar to this, but, you know, we need to think about the long-term strategy and the way that we are looking at education in Sacramento. We need to systematically look at the way things, we're doing business. We're filling holes and not looking at a long-term strategy, and that is only going to continuously lead us in this ketchup mode that I feel like we've been in. But I agree that a lot of those items should be off the table, especially IB schools, GATE. We cannot have those kind of major impacts to our families and to the children in our community, especially folks going through, we're going through a global pandemic. It's just, we cannot take away art, we cannot take away music. So, I would like those items to be looked at. I do want to start that, and as Board Member Murawski noted, negotiated solutions need to be where our starting point is in this conversation. We need to look at the long-term goal of our district and how we can really work together to make those savings that we're not going to be in this situation hopefully years down the road. It's, it's just not, again, a long-term solution. This is not how a business should be run, and we need to be looking at it in some ways of that nature. I agree with everything, again, that Board Member Garcia noted. You know, once we have that target number and we can plug in the federal state funds, I think that's going to put us in a little bit better situation. And then again, looking at those negotiated solutions, hopefully by May or June, we can have more of a dialed-in budget and then make those changes that need to be at that point. I won't speak too long because I think they both said exactly a lot of the comments that I already had. But again, I want to make sure that we're not looking at this as a constant ketchup. I want to look at a long-term strategy for our district. And again, I think the starting point for that is negotiated solutions. Anything that's not going to directly impact our kids who've already gone through enough.
President Pritchett, did you want me to?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Member.
Okay, sure.
I echo those. Well, I cannot see the next board member, Vice President Murawski. So, if you can help me out with that.
Does any, anyone else have other comments or questions? I have, I have one, if no one else does.
Why don't you go ahead, Vice President Murawski?
Okay, just to, to follow up on, on some of the comments that have been made so far. On your comment, Member Villa, I think it's, it's, it's really spot-on in terms of long-term thinking. We have, I just wanted to remind everyone, you know, sort of where we are with our strategic planning process. We have a strategic plan that was adopted in 2016, for 2016 through 2021. We have an LCAP that is now going to be a three-year LCAP that's being developed right now for next school year and two more years after that. We have, we have an opportunity to invest in our facilities through Measure H funds that our community approved last year. And, you know, so we really, really need to do some big strategic thinking on, you know, where are we going to invest? What academic and instructional and, and facilities? You know, those, those should all be aligning. So, hopefully, we can talk about, you know, how, how to, how to best, like, what's the best process and forum for having those conversations? But I, I really do think it's necessary. And it's like a unique time where all these things are converging to like, what's the vision? What's the, like, what's the 2030 vision for our district, right? Something like that. I did have one, one quick clarifying question actually for Rose also. There in the last slide, I think it says, "So, these fiscal responsibilities can continue until the structural deficit is eliminated." I just wanted to clarify that the, like, technically, it's, and maybe it's the second to last slide. Oh, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to clarify that, that comment because I, I thought it was until we are positively certified or?
My understanding is until our structural deficit is eliminated because we could, remember, we had a discussion about that we could possibly swing between qualified and negative just because we might have surplus funds or one-time funds. But, but we, we would still be operating at a deficit because we haven't implemented a plan to address the deficit, you know, on a long-term basis, not just a short-term basis. So, what we would remain, yeah, until, yeah, we had a plan in place that, that was going, that, that was going to, you know, get us out of this deficit spending.
Right, right, like a more sustainable. So, it's not, it's not entirely, completely objective. There's a little bit of like, okay, you need to really get out of the woods in a sustainable way. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And I don't know if Superintendent Gordon or Terry are on the line, Superintendent? They want to comment on that, too?
I was going to mention that I, I'm not sure if Superintendent Gordon is still on the line and, and Mr. Schweitzer as well, and they could maybe reference ed code language just to be as specific as possible to our board and to our community.
Didn't see them on the line earlier. But that's okay. I think, I think I got enough information and we can also follow up.
We, we can follow up and then communicate to the board via B C. I, I'm almost certain that there is some ed code language related to, to their role with, with districts like ours.
Perfect. Thanks for that. Yes, I got my full screen back. I'm back, I'm back.
Thank you. I will turn it over.
All right. Is there any other board member comments, Member Garcia? I can't see you because I think you're frozen. Oh, there you go. Okay. Yeah, so I, I had a question about, as we're thinking about coming up with a target number and then, and then thinking about how federal funds, state funds, negotiated savings offset, you know, that targeted number. Can you, can you tell me a little bit how the, I guess, the, this, then, regular or the one-stop process works as also being part of offsetting that thirty million dollars even before we start implementing any cuts that we may have to take action on for next, the next board meeting? So, because it's part of that, right? I mean, these, these, this is natural, like, attrition and, and, and I'm thinking of enrollment, right? So, so I know that districts across the state are experiencing declining enrollment at a much greater number than, than, than prior years. And, and that's, that's a big problem. You know, I just heard that Elk Grove, for example, a district that has traditionally been very fiscally stable, is now, you know, their budget is now negatively, they have a negative certification. So, now, and it's, a lot of it is due because of their decline in enrollment. So, so it's just, it's, it's just a big problem. So, I'm just trying to figure out how that process impacts whatever targeted number we, we, is identified, one way or the other.
Yeah. Member Garcia, I'll let Rose mention, we actually are trying to get away from the one-stop language. It's just the budget development process.
Okay.
But I did want to just mention that until the board takes final action on the FRP, those sites that are included or have elements included in the FRP, obviously, that process will not be finalized. So, yes, there are elements to the process that we have begun, but for sites that are included in the FRP, those will not be finalized until the board takes final action. And then, Rose, if you have any other comments on, on the process and how we utilize projected enrollment data as part of that, that would be helpful as well. But I did want to clarify that I know that there's a lot of anxiety in the system, which is why we have to move toward an action item next week.
Yeah, yes, very quickly, I can, I can comment on that, Member Garcia. So, for our budget development process, regardless if we're embarking on a fiscal recovery plan, part of our, our budget projections do include, of course, our projected enrollment along with the staffing changes that go with the projected enrollment. So, if we're projecting to increase enrollment, there's going to be a calculation that says this increase will require this additional FTE. And then the other way around, right? The opposite is true as well. If we're projecting a decline, we will also calculate the, the revised FTE that goes along with that decline. So, those numbers are included in our, our, our target deficit, you know, regardless of the FRP or the governor's proposal. That's just, you know, part of our normal, our regular budgeting development process.
So, it, it does help because it, it just, it's another variable, right? That, that feeds into this, you know, backing into whatever number, you know, is identified. And then I, I know this is in a sort of a discussion meeting, informational meeting. I, I wanted to make sure that before we close, that maybe we, we ran through what, what happened, summarized sort of some of the, the proposals, the frameworks, the actions, just so that we all have a clear understanding of, of sort of how, what to expect for the, for next week. But also that we, as a board, gave enough direction to staff in terms of how to, how to do your work in preparation for next week. So, so whenever the, whenever the discussion is about to end, if we can just revisit, do that summary, that recap.
Yeah.
Superintendent, do you feel like that you have enough feedback from the board right now?
Yeah, I, I was going to at least start my response to Member Garcia's question, but want to make sure, President Pritchett, that there's no other comments or questions from other board members.
Are there any other comments or questions from other board members?
Okay, not, not right now. I know I, I missed part of it because I, my internet stalled and lost power. But I know I spoke with Member Murawski about her recommendations, and I'm in full support of that.
Well, and, and, and of course, we've taken copious notes, but I would appreciate if board members can send your notes to me individually. Of course, that would be very much appreciated. But I do want to start with just one item because I don't know that the board is going to come to a resolution on this, but Member Garcia's question about a target number, if we just go, we may have to backwards map to get to that number just based on feedback. For example, slide thirty-one, if Mr. Flores can go back to that, that was one area in which at least Board Member Murawski mentioned that those items that might require further analysis, if you will, that we look very closely at those in order to figure out how we might maintain those types, those types of programs, maybe a different methodology. But you can see that that would amount to about six-point-five million dollars. So, we're going to have to kind of take all of your comments and your, your questions and figure out what would not be possible in terms of, in terms of cuts. and figure out what would not be possible, uh, in terms of, uh, in terms of cuts. Um, so it, it'd be hard for us to do it right now, Member Garcia, but that's probably the analysis that we're going to do as we look at our notes. You may remember that, uh, the total amount, uh, in the FRP was about $18 million. Uh, so once we've gone through the notes, then we would, then we would be, we would be able to subtract, uh, those, those elements that, uh, that you're providing direction and guidance on to, uh, to keep, uh, um, as, uh, as a, as, as a way for us to continue to study and come back with, with other program designs, if you will. Um, so it'd be hard to do it right now probably because, uh, we do have a lot of notes that, that we've been provided. Um, let me ask, uh, Ms. Ramos, um, as well to see if she has any, uh, lingering questions that, that she wants to make sure to ask, uh, when we, uh, in preparation for, uh, meeting tomorrow as a staff and, and making sure that we review, uh, the notes that we've all taken.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just have one more clarifying question. Um, can you put up that slide again? Because I think, um, I just want to make sure that I heard the recommendations correctly by, um, Board Member Murawski because, uh, that's what I was, um, supportive of. Um, this is a good slide to, um, essentially demonstrate where there is additional conversation that needs to happen, planning, um, you know, you know, over a longer period of time. But I thought that the recommendation was to, um, remove, for example, the IB programs and maybe the LDV, um, and as well as the inclusive practices off the table. It, it, did I, did I hear that correctly?
And Waldorf, yeah.
And Waldorf, because, because the, um, proposed recommendations in, in many of, in, in, in these instances, um, remove, it basically eliminate, eliminate the program as currently, um, as it's currently, um, being offered. So, so I just wanted to understand, get clarity on what the recommendation was. Because I think what I heard from you is that all of the, this, this entire slide is basically, um, maybe, uh, programs that need further discussion.
Yes, that is my understanding. And Member Murawski, you may want to, uh, reiterate what, um, what you had recommended. But I know, um, you know, when I look at this list, I think of, you know, things that need for, uh, further analysis would be something like the Waldorf program. Is this something that we can incorporate with other, you know, with our other Waldorf programs combined? Um, and that's just one example of many throughout this entire list. Is that correct, Member Murawski?
Well, so I, I did, I did say that some, some of these, I would say, should just be taken off the table. And I gave examples of, uh, IB, Caleb Greenwood, um, Waldorf and LDV middle school as ones that I just, I feel like I know enough about to say with, you know, a fair amount of confidence that, that they, you know, given the potential enrollment impacts, that savings would be minimal and it's sort of, you know, not worth that, uh, you know, disrupting an entire program for the just minimal amount of savings, if any. So those were, those were ones that, um, that, but I'm not certainly the authority on, um, what, what else may be on that list. So I think that does deserve a little bit of staff analysis to say, you know, I wanted to say, take this type of, of, of a proposal off the table. I don't know exactly what fits in that box. I suggested ones that I, I thought would. I also wanted to make a, a suggestion or I clarified that the recommendation for further study also included preschool um, as part of, you know, strategic planning and which is not on this slide. So just, that's just a clarification. And, and inclusive practices, I'm sorry, just to clarify one more thing, on inclusive practices, that is not a program that, you know, I think we, uh, we should get rid of. Um, I, I am cognizant that, uh, you know, I've learned a bit about it. It's, it's a very expensive model to maintain, which may not be equitable throughout the district because we can't afford to expand that kind of model throughout the district. So if there is some kind of longer-term kind of, uh, plan that is consistent with, uh, with inclusion throughout the district and there, you know, and there is, uh, something proposed along those lines that is consistent with serving our students with disabilities, um, in an inclusive way. I don't want to say that, you know, we can't ever make changes. I just want, uh, would want anything that we do involving that to be done in a, in a thoughtful way. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Member Rhodes, did you have your hand up? Did I miss, did I miss you? I missed them, overlooked.
No, I was just saying that, um, I believe I would support this, this whole list getting further, further analysis. Um, we talk about SES program, uh, when you talk about, uh, John Steele, um, what that means to their middle school, uh, what that means to SES's program in general. Um, you can, you can lose whole programs, uh, and, and disrupt whole learning communities. Um, and this is that list and that's why it says further analysis. So I would say, uh, for this list, we do need further analysis on how it impacts broadly, uh, our district, how it impacts, uh, overall numbers of our district. Um, and, and I think that this list should be, uh, removed so that we can have further discussion or have further analysis on, on a broader plan of what this looks like going forward, especially how we service everyone. So this list for me, I would support, uh, taking it out often and analyzing it differently.
Okay, um, can, can you please take this, uh, off so I can see all the board members? All right, thank you. I'm gonna make sure I, I reach everyone. So if, just to be recognized, please just raise your hand. That way I don't miss anybody. Um, Member, uh, Member Villa and then Member Murawski?
I'm just quickly going back to slide 31. Um, I think some of those programs, like I had mentioned, the IB, the Waldorf, inclusive, those are items that I believe, yes, should be off the table. But I do kind of want to follow up with, uh, what Board Member Rhodes had stated because I think removing the other teachers from the other programs would be highly impactful. That would just be, not, in my words, it's just, it's not fair that we're serving these high, um, functioning programs, um, but, but leaving on the table, teachers from other schools. I, I don't think that that really equates to what our district is about. Um, I understand the impacts of, you know, Kit Carson and the IB programs, but because they're a high-functioning program, doesn't mean that there aren't high-functioning teachers serving our students at other schools that we need to look at further as well.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think during the analysis, we could determine if these programs would survive with those cuts. Uh, Member Murawski?
Yeah, thank you for the additional discussion and a clarification on, on your, everyone's thoughts on this. Um, I do, I do think that, um, you know, when we're looking at, we're not looking at, you know, what is, what is the best way to serve our students? You know, this is, what is the, you know, what is the way we can serve our students with the resources we have, um, and make it sustainable? Um, so there is, you know, a lot of these things, we wouldn't be talking about cutting without the, a, a budget deficit hanging over our head. So just to, just to kind of put it in that frame. So I think, I think in, in that frame, we need to think about, you know, which, which cuts are actually worth moving forward, for, from a fiscal perspective on, right? There's, there's some cuts that are just on this list that I, I don't think will actually yield a, like a fiscal benefit. And so those are the ones that, because this is a fiscal question, those are the ones that I think, you know, don't make sense to pursue. Unless it is like part of a big picture redesign of, you know, we're going to only do K eights and not middle schools. Or, you know, I mean, uh, don't take that as, as any suggestion, but like, you know, that kind of mega redesign kind of framework, then sure, we, we, we can talk about it. But, um, just strictly looking at it from a fiscal framework, um, I think there, you know, we, we need to relook at some of the cuts that are like very small dollar amounts and have enrollment impacts that will mean that they don't yield any fiscal savings. And we need to, you know, be serious about keeping on the table if, you know, ones that do yield fiscal savings. And that's why I said, you know, even though it pains me that the inclusive practices is a very expensive program to maintain. I think we should maintain it, but, you know, like, we need to be serious about looking at all of those, all of those programs that do have fiscal savings.
Member Rhodes?
And, and I, I would say, um, once again, I, I support the, uh, looking at further analysis, but I also like to say this caveat. Um, when we, when we just look, and I know that we're, we're talking about fiscal, um, but when we just look at, uh, the fiscal, uh, side of things and, and the side on how we cut things just on a fiscal view, often that takes out the human side uh, of, of these cuts and what it impacts. Um, and as people who are serving community um, in a public agency, um, even with our fiscal problems, we also have to look at the human side of it. Um, and if we don't do that, we be, we become these talking heads that are robotic and, and not taking into consideration our constituency. Uh, so I do want to put that out there, um, that, that we always serve community and, and obviously serving community is getting our budget together, right? Um, but then also serving community is, is maintaining our, um, learning communities that, uh, that are impacted, uh, that are not high-functioning or, or whatever we might decide to deem them, um, but that still matter, right? So, um, I would like to put that in there. Um, I'm always gonna lean in community first, um, but also with the understanding of our fiscal responsibility. So I thank you guys for your time.
Yeah, I agree with you, Member Rhodes. Um, I just, if, if we don't make these decisions, someone's gonna make them for us. And, um, we have to, we have to examine that. I think that brings me back to, you know, our resolution, um, that we'll bring back at the next board meeting. And we need to be a collective voice, all of us together as a team, and to fix that budget, just as you said. All right, just so I don't miss anyone, does anybody else have any comments, questions, clarifications? Okay. Superintendent, do you feel like you have enough feedback from the?
Yeah, we, obviously, we'd all always want more feedback, but, um, but please do send us, uh, any notes. Uh, send me directly any notes, um, uh, and include, uh, Raul Basio in your communication to me directly. Um, and then I would like, uh, just, uh, because I do think it's an important topic to discuss and not wait until next week to do so, uh, for you to hear from Chief McCarron, uh, particularly for our new board members. Just, uh, you know, how this is handled, uh, regularly in the past, uh, unfortunately for us because we are a district that, uh, that faces some fiscal challenges, uh, uh, the process that she, of course, um, uh, oversees, uh, with, with her fantastic team, uh, which is a difficult one. Um, but it's, it's one that we are bound to abide by, by ed code, uh, which is, uh, layoff notices. Um, and, and what we might expect based on the conversations today and the fact that we're in, in a budget development process right now. So, uh, Ms. McCarron.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, yes, you know, I think this really does bring together both the fiscal and the human of everything that, that we do in these very difficult conversations. In order for, um, for us to move forward, I just want to share some highlights of the timeline that I think it's helpful to keep in mind as you're having these difficult conversations. We need, given that we are already basically into February, the next time you meet, next week will be February. We need decisions to be able to meet a March 15th deadline. And that's because when you make a decision at the board meeting next week, we will have a very limited time, two weeks, right, before the following one. But in that time, we need to be able to go back to the school sites, the departments, whoever it is that's affected by the decisions that are made. So they have an opportunity to do whatever outreach they need to do with their school sites, with their stakeholders, um, and reengage in that budget development process that you've heard about. We then do an initial, an initial analysis to be able to bring to you a resolution on the 18th that will have whatever it is that you have decided reflective in that. The initial analysis involves a, a number of things. And we have, you know, two people doing this work, um, that will be able to bring to you with, um, with the information that we have and the decisions made, what the potential layoff would look like. Now, this is for certificated. We in the past have, have liked to do certificated and classified at the same time, but one follows a March 15th deadline per ed code and the other is 60-day. As, um, CBO Ramos mentioned in the PowerPoint, the, the classified with 60-day is 60 days before the end of their work calendar, which is different days in June. So for us, that has a little bit, like, potentially can have a little bit later of a decision point. But because they're often so intertwined, the classified and the certificated, based on the programs, um, those decisions really do go hand in hand. So with a decision at the beginning of February and a resolution, the second board meeting, we would then go back and do an additional analysis because then we will know exactly what it is that's going to be reduced. And we will have to analyze what that means for the actual people. Who is it that would get the notices? We would be looking certainly at attrition, certainly at the retirements that we've received or the resignations that we've received. We would be analyzing all information that we have and we would, um, then move forward with issuing preliminary layoff notices. Those preliminary no-, layoff notices would go out the week of the 9th. Um, the March 15th is actually a Monday and we would need to make sure by ed code, we have those to people before then. So we would be looking to get those out Wednesday, Thursday, Friday at the latest. Then, following those preliminary notices, we would, um, go through an entire process where employees have the opportunity to request a hearing. That hearing is held with an administrative law judge in April. We come back to the board in May with a final layoff resolution to say, this is, this is the result of all of those things that have come before. And for us to be able to issue those final layoff notices. Recisions that take place can take place. Um, certainly, there are some time changes between March and May. And recisions can take place after the issuance of the layoff notice as well. But as you all very well know, even receiving a March 15th layoff notice has an impact on people. It's, it's, I mean, a pink slip, as they sometimes call it, is just that. It's an uncertainty for the next school year, right? So we're talking about things that would take effect July 1st. So it's still finish out the school year, but imagine you're doing that with not knowing what's gonna happen. Needless to say, certainly lots of things to consider and just a few points we wanted to highlight for you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarron. That's very helpful. Is there any questions from board members regarding that and the process?
I, I do want to just again, really reiterate, uh, that because what we presented today is very preliminary in terms of the current budget proposal from the governor at a very early stage. Uh, and Member Garcia mentioned, you know, having more, uh, details about federal relief dollars and other things, um, that those recisions, uh, may be likely. Um, um, and that, but we do, we are bound, uh, by that March 15th deadline. Um, and we have to take that responsibility very seriously. Otherwise, uh, we of course will be responsible for, um, uh, for, for staffing levels, uh, that, that may not, uh, be necessary, if you will. And there is of course that human element, uh, but, um, just know that, uh, we would do everything we could to stay ahead of this. Um, uh, but we are in this situation because of this, uh, uh, because of our fiscal, fiscal crisis. Um, we, I, I wish that we were in a position where, um, we weren't bothered by the fact that we have, uh, several comprehensive high schools with fewer than 300 students because we, our budget structure allows us to invest, uh, in those programs. And we know that it's costing us more money than, uh, than, than the ADA revenue that those, those programs might produce. Unfortunately, we're not in that position. Um, and, and so that's why it becomes even more difficult for us to have to address, uh, uh, these issues, uh, while still abiding by, uh, by, uh, ed code deadlines that we have, of course. So, thank you, um, Ms. McCarron.
I'm sorry, Superintendent, can I just underscore one additional point? If decisions aren't made for us to issue a March 15th, we can't go back and say, oops, we meant to do these additional things. March 15th is the, the big pot, right? It can go, it can go down in terms of, you know what, we actually aren't going to need to affect, um, these credential holders. We aren't going to need to affect that program. But it can't increase. So the March 15th has to be like our biggest possible But it can't increase. So the March 15 has to be like our biggest possible need. And then we come down to May, which through, as I said, attrition and a variety of other things, come down to an oftentimes smaller final layoff notice. I just want to underscore that March 15, it's, it's really, that's it.
Yep. And of course, just recognizing that we do have new board members, but also for our current board members, this is a very complicated topic. We, we would be happy to organize some two-bys. Just recognize that as, as Ms. McCarron said, we don't have a lot of time and we don't have a lot of people that would be doing this kind of work, but we can always be creative and make sure that, that you have an opportunity to, to be with her and ask additional questions about this very complicated process. Vice President Murawski, I think.
I just noticed that President Pritchett looks like she's frozen. So it, it sounded like we were wrapping up. Is there any, any further comment, Superintendent Aguilera or, or board members? Okay, so I should pull up. Sorry, I don't have it in front of me, the, the next, next board meetings. Regular board meeting, February 4, of course, where we're going to revisit some of these topics and February 18. And I'm seeing a board governance meeting posted for February 1. Has that been confirmed? I guess so. February 1 at 5:30. Okay, with that, I'll, unless there's anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn if that is in order.
Sure, move.
Second.
You're a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all very much. Good night.